Available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. In order to meet the required social distancing protocols, we must limit the number of people inside the chambers to those seats that are numbered. Staff is assisting individuals who are present and wish to testify on items on today's agenda by ensuring that each person has signed in. Based on estimations, we are staggering the times of various hearings. These times are identified in parentheses on the agenda. We are encouraging attendees to arrive no more than 15 minutes before their scheduled hearing. Please note that an agenda item will not begin before the time posted. In the event that the allocated hearing times go quicker than estimated, there will be breaks in the hearing. If you are here to testify on Agenda Item 4.3, Change of Zone 040751, the Village Gardens Development, the public hearing on this application is being delayed to the May 26, 2021 Public Commission, Planning Commission Hearing, as Commissioner Campbell has declared a conflict of interest on this matter and will recuse himself from this portion of the hearing, which results in a lack of a quorum. If you parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, the gate is open and no parking coupons are needed. Out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We appreciate your cooperation. Please note the Planning Commission action today is final on the following agenda item, 4.1B, Preliminary Plat 21001. Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council or the County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the action of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held April 28, 2021.
So I move, Campbell?
Second, Edgerton.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
The next item of business is the Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request from someone wishing to speak or at the request of a commission member. I will ask Jerry to read all the Consent Agenda items into the record. Once those items are read, she will ask if there is anyone wishing to speak. If you wish to speak on an item not on the, on an item on the Consent Agenda, we would ask that you stand and state that item. That item will then be removed from the Consent Agenda and scheduled as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda. All items remaining on the Consent Agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion for approval. Jerry, will you please call the items on the Consent Agenda?
Yes, please note that Item 1.1, which is Comprehensive Conformance 1, or 21011, relating to the new Meadow Lane Shopping Center redevelopment plan, is being removed from the Consent Agenda and scheduled for a separate public hearing. We have one remaining item under consent, which is Item 1.2, Change of Zone 16036B, to amend the existing Wilderness Hills commercial planned unit development in the B2 Commercial District to revise the allowed uses on property generally located at South 27th and Yankee Hill Road. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any.
Are there any ex parte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
I don't think we have any of those either.
Okay, is there anyone here wishing to speak on this item? If so, please stand and state that, please.
Okay, I don't see any. I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we approve Change of Zone 16036B.
Second, Reiman Yost.
Jerry?
Okay, Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr.
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. After identifying themselves and providing their work address, staff will make a brief presentation on each public hearing item. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address, and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes. The clerk will then indicate you have one minute remaining to wrap up your testimony. Once the final minute has lapsed, the clerk will indicate that your time is up. If during your testimony you have copies of documents or materials you would like distributed to the Planning Commission members and/or included as part of the record, please place the information in the folder on the podium. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, will you please call the first public hearing item?
Yes. Item 3.1 is Comprehensive Plan Conformance 21011, to review as to conformance with the 2040 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed new Meadow Lane Shopping Center redevelopment plan, which would serve as a guide for the redevelopment activities within the Meadow Lane Shopping Center redevelopment area. The proposed redevelopment plan area consists of seven acres, more or less, on property generally located at the northeast corner of 70th and Vine Street. Staff recommendation is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on this item?
I don't see any.
Good afternoon, Dan Marvin, Director of Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I'm here today to introduce a redevelopment plan amendment for Meadow Lane shopping area, and I just want to give a little background information on why we've decided that this was a project that we wanted to support and approve and move forward, and discuss about another project that we had experience on and where we felt that this was a great success for the neighborhood. Probably, you know, it may, first of this year, late last year, we did get a conversation from the owners of Meadow Lane, and they asked if we would support a blight study for that area and if we would support the use of tax increment financing to help revitalize that shopping area. And we had some experience with this with Piedmont, which, the Elmo's on, I can go through. Here's a picture of Piedmont before we did a redevelopment in the area. Of course, the architects are always going to give you nice pictures of renderings of what it would look like, but grabbed off of Google Earth, a picture of what it looks like today, and it's very similar. And what our experience with Piedmont was that we had a neighborhood shopping area that was getting tired. It served, it served a vital role in serving that neighborhood, and they were, you know, Kay's Restaurant was over there, they'd lost a local restaurant out of there, and so we supported that project. There was a substantial amount of private investment along with some public investment. And what you see today is many local restaurants, or a local restaurant that's occupying the Kay's site, and many of the same businesses are there, but they've increased the foot traffic, the property taxes have gone up, the property tax revenue to the taxing agencies will be going up once the TIF has been removed and the commerce and activity in that shopping area has been greatly improved. So using that as a model, we thought that, you know, Meadow Lane faces many of the same retail challenges that a lot of stores have because online traffic is continuing to consume merchandise sales, and that creates a challenge. But we felt that it serves a vital area of the neighborhood, and I think by witness by the number of emails, I think there's a lot of support for this as a neighborhood shopping area. So we, we felt that this was the right thing to move forward with. I know that you've had some comments about apartments. When you do an overall plan, you create kind of a kitchen sink mentality to talk about what possibly could go in there. And there is not a proposal before you to do an apartment project over there. There was a discussion about the challenges of a gas station on that corner and the future of what might happen if gas stations, which have themselves experienced challenges, what could happen there? There's elevation differences that create difficulty in being able to expand that site. So I think the, the author imagined a variety of different uses that could go in on that site, and one of them was an apartment. But let's be very clear here, that's not what's before you today, it's something that is a revitalization of a neighborhood shopping mall. There is not an effort to displace, displace the tenants in that shopping mall. As a matter of fact, the early conversations that we had was that it was to try to create a vibrant shopping center to maintain the existing businesses in that shopping center is what the developer felt was important. I can answer any questions, or I know that Anne Post is here to represent the developer as well.
Any questions for Mr. Marvin right now? Dan, I have a couple.
Okay.
So there's two different owners. You know, there's a different owner for the gas station parcel, and then the shopping center is owned by someone else. Can you discuss why both parcels were included when they looked for the blight designation?
Well, what, we looked at the, I mean, we, we do feel like that there is a future challenge that could happen there. Part of it is the elevation changes. Gas stations have challenges of their own, some of them have been around for a very long period of time. There tend to be environmental issues that you can have. That's not to say that we're going to say taxpayers are going to eat those costs, it's a recognition that there's challenges from the terrain over there and from things that are natural within a filling station. We also know that it's a full-service filling station, which is of value to a number of people because you can take your car in there and get it serviced, which is different than a lot of typical gas stations. But we included that, and we included the sidewalks that would have been in front of that so that public investments could go in areas that would be appropriate to fix the sidewalks and other areas around that site. So we felt that it was integral and part of the, of the area.
So the right of ways for both Vine and 70th Street are included?
Correct.
Could some of this TIF money be used to improve that intersection or the sidewalks for the schoolchildren?
It definitely would likely to be used for sidewalk repair, we commonly do that. And is it possible that it could go into the intersection? I think that future intersections that need to create additional capacity, if that's what the neighbors were for, because that's, that's actually an issue as well. But if capacity additions needed to be created at that intersection, we've used TIF for that. We've used TIF for the actual traffic signal as well, where maybe there was a need for a turn signal and turn, and enhanced turning movements in that area, TIF could be used to help move traffic through there. And I think the concern from the apartment was that they, the, I think the neighbors believe, probably rightfully so, that the, the intersection is at capacity and creating additional trips through that intersection would, would make it more difficult. Anything that would increase the amount of trips because of a change of use from the filling station would have to have, be traffics, there'd be a traffic study that would have to be done before anything would be moved forward in that regard.
Do you think that traffic study will happen then because of this work going on at the shopping center?
I don't believe so, because we're not, we're not increasing the amount of square feet for the, for the retail development. We're just trying to create an environment where it remains viable and serves that, that community for the long term.
Okay, I'm just wondering how neighbors could ask for a traffic study to be done?
If we have somebody from Public Works, I can certainly, we can certainly ask for a traffic study to be done as part of the redevelopment plan, redevelopment agreement that would be moving forward.
Okay, and so I just want to be clear, at this time in the redevelopment agreement, there are no references to putting apartments in on the service station lot?
That's correct.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now. Okay.
One quick question. Dan, I assume that as part of the redevelopment plan, I didn't see it, that there's no change in access to either 70th Vine or W?
No, we're not, we're not changing the access points into, into and out of the Meadow Lane shopping area.
Okay, thank you.
And when does this go to Urban Design?
When did it go to Urban Design? It's already been and was approved at Urban Design. The date that was, it's a monthly meeting.
Okay.
Ernie, do you know what date they were at Urban Design?
Actually, it's going to June.
Oh, it's, it hasn't been there, okay. It will be there on, in June.
Okay, thank you. I think, does Anne want to come up?
Yeah. Good afternoon, my name is Anne Post, I'm an attorney with Baylor Evans &amp; Law Firm. My address is 1248 O Street, Suite 600. With me is Michelle Keough with Hampton Enterprises. Specifically, Michelle is the head of, she is the president of properties, so she is head of management of all of Hampton's properties. And so that's why she's here today to help answer any questions that we might have on this project. So first, let me kind of go through what this project is. As Dan referenced, Meadow Lane Shopping Center was built around 1966. That means that it is over 50 years old, it has been continually repaired and maintained. But at over 50 years old, it's at the point where the shopping center and the community would benefit from a significant investment in the shopping center. And so therefore, that's what we're proposing with this project. With this project, Hampton is planning to invest over a million dollars of Hampton's money, so that is net of TIF, into this project. Let's see, I have elevations here to, we can reference, as I talk about what we're going to. All right, so this is one view, this is in your redevelopment plan. When you see the, what we're proposing for this project is going to include resurfacing of the exterior columns, of the exterior and the columns. That's going to include new stonework on the exterior and all of the structural supports that are going to have to go in place to support that stonework, painted brick and metal panels, the stone surface signs, so that's where we look at this nice sign to announce the Meadow Lane Shopping Center and to give it more of a sense of place, removal and replacement of aging and deteriorating awnings and soffits, improved lighting throughout the center. Again, the lighting was originally put in place around 1960s, it's been updated since then, but it's not, we have LEDs now, and we'd like to benefit from that. New roof parapets, and so you can see that more. If we move to this picture, you can see the roof parapets. You can correct me if I'm saying, if I'm pronouncing parapets wrong, I apologize. Anyway, so there's also going to be black metal fencing on the west side of the project to really delineate the shopping center from the rest of the neighborhood. And also, we are planning to incorporate replacing some of those sidewalks that are deteriorating, and really that give that connectivity to the neighborhood as it is the neighborhood shopping center. Here is just an elevation of the other side of the project to give you an idea of what we're proposing. So it came to our attention kind of late last week that there was some of this confusion about the scope of the project, both whether there were going to be apartments included and also the impact that it was going to have on tenants in, in, within the Meadow Lane Shopping Center. And so first, when that came to our attention late last week, I can tell you, we did everything we could to try and clarify that and to provide information to the, the people that we knew of and that had voiced their concerns. So what does that mean? That means first, when the urban development made us aware of some of these comments, we worked with them to, to develop a response and an email that went out to those people to clarify the scope of the project. We also, we also put together a letter on behalf of Hampton Enterprises that was emailed to those people that provided their email addresses to clarify the scope of the project, also to give them our contact information to reach out with any other questions. I know, also last night, there was a meeting of the Board of the Meadow Lane Neighborhood Association. We really appreciate they were gracious enough to actually add us at the beginning of the agenda, to give us some time to describe the project, talk about what we're trying to do and the scope of the project. And also, it was a board meeting, but they opened it up to members in the area, people who'd voiced concerns, so we could have more, that one-on-one conversation with more of the people in the area. And then finally, a letter went out, well, I'll come back to this, but a letter did go out to all the tenants in the, in the shopping center this morning to explain exactly where we are in the process and, you know, what we anticipate and how we anticipate going forward. I do want to put a pin in that, I'm going to come back to it. So to clarify scope, the question was whether apartments were going to be included in this. There is no plan for apartments in this proposed project. As Director Marvin discussed, apartments are put as a, please, thank you for your time, allowing me to proceed. So apartments were included as a proposed use of the service station site in the future, and that is a use that would be in line with a comprehensive plan. And so that's where the author suggested that, as a use in line with comprehensive plan. Hampton does not own that site, Hampton does not have a contract to purchase that site, Hampton does not intend to build apartments on the site. That is not part of this proposal at all to our, that isn't a part of this project. So we made sure to clarify that as much as we could with all those communications. Next was the question of the effect on the tenants. We can tell you that as tenants have signed new leases, there have been continuous communication about the intent, the idea that there would be investment in the site at some point, that these upgrades or improvements, there is the intent to, to make these upgrades and improvements. However, as you also know, we're asking for tax increment financing as a part of this project. One of the quirks, one of the tenants of tax increment financing projects is that the project wouldn't happen but for approval of TIF. And so that's where we have a little bit of a, we're trying not to put the cart before the horse with giving tenants the elevations that we anticipate, telling them exactly what the surfaces are going to look like, because TIF isn't approved, so we don't have a final project to go to them with. So that's where, where there's been some questions or some statements that tenants weren't aware that this was happening. Well, tenants were aware that improvements, the idea of improvements, that improvements Hampton intended or wanted to do them at some point, but as far as these elevations or seeing these elevations or the timeline for these, it hasn't, hasn't been solidified yet. We still need to get the TIF approved before we can put all those details in place. And so that's where the letter that went out to tenants this morning kind of confirmed that, let them know where we are in the process, that there would be more communications once those final details were available. And so, finally, to close, we appreciate, if anything comes out of all of this communication, we know that Meadow Lane, the Neighborhood Association knows how to get ahold of us. We've got their contact information, there's even been some discussion about further ways that Hampton and the neighborhood can work together in the future. And so, so we are glad to have those avenues of communication more open than ever now. We hope that, that conversation has really clarified the scope of this project to really show the benefit that we're really hoping to bring to the neighborhood, and if anything, we have been further assured of just the value of this shopping center to the neighborhood, and that really helps justify our, justify our, just our investment in it, so. So with that, I am happy to, and we are happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Nick?
Anne, I know there's still negotiations going on with urban development, but can you specify some of the items that would be used for the TIF?
Yeah, and so negotiations are still ongoing, you know, we, we've had some preliminary conversations about it. As you know, TIF, we're, we're limited in our use of TIF to items that are going to have some sort of public benefit. So that's where TIF, one item that TIF will probably be allocated to are those sidewalk improvements, so that promote that connectivity to the neighborhood. And other, another area would be facade upgrades that really give the, give the center just that sense of character to help keep it a vibrant hub of the community.
Thank you.
You don't have any questions?
Um, so is Hampton the one who built this shopping center back in 1966?
No, we did not.
When did Hampton come to own this? I tried to find it on the, on the assessors, and I couldn't find it.
We're, we're not exactly sure of the year because Joe Hampton is no longer here, but to the best of our knowledge, it's close to 40 years that we've owned it. The only thing that Hampton built on that is, if you know the shopping center, it has a wing on the north side that runs east and west. That was an addition that Joe put on probably 30 years ago. But other than that, we did not build it, we've just done the remodeling of the new tenants moving in and out.
When you guys talk about doing sidewalks, I assume that you're talking about sidewalks internal, but also along, say like Vine and 70th Street as well?
Correct.
Okay. So at this time, no, because you don't, Hampton doesn't own it, no improvements are scheduled for the, for the filling station?
Correct.
Okay, but I assume that, you know, that owner is supportive of this project and...
Yes.
Yep, I, I know we've had discussion, we've made that owner aware that this project is happening, you know, hasn't voiced any con- You know, hasn't voiced any concerns at all also. To our knowledge, has no plans to do anything with it.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for, oh yeah, Dick?
As, as I've driven by it in the past, even though it's hard, you don't want to look too much because of intersection and such, it appears that it is completely full. Is that correct?
We have one vacancy of approximately 1,300 square feet, but yes, it is almost full.
Pretty small vacancy, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for coming up today.
Thank you.
All right. Testimony and support of this application? Any testimony and support? Oh, maybe? Okay. I know we have one on Zoom that is in neutral. Should we maybe go to them next? Channel five, are you out there?
Melissa, you're up.
Hi there. Can everybody hear me okay?
Hi Melissa, we can.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. My name's Melissa Baker. I live at 7125 Yosemite Drive here in Lincoln. So I'm over in the area next to Mahoney Park, but my children go to Meadow Lane. I grew up in Meadow Lane on Northborough, in between the shopping center and the school, and my sister lives in the house that we grew up in. So we're very familiar with the neighborhood. And I think I fell in a neutral testimony here now because there's a lot more information that I needed before I could say fully that I supported it. I'm leaning, I was leaning more toward opposed, but regardless, I just have a lot of questions. I, I did receive the 46-page study last night, the blind study. I've not been able to digest that. It's a lot, and I'm new to this. So I've reached out and had questions along the way. So some of the points that I'd just like to make, because TIF funding is again, something that's new to me as well, just to better understand this project. And I think a lot of us in the, whether we live in the Meadow Lane neighborhood or are frequently in that space, or our children go to school there, we have love for this area and we definitely want to see it improve. No doubt about that. So I'm here to just try to help make a positive impact wherever I can. So some of the questions I'll throw out and the information I just wanted to make people think about is, is that you've already touched on it, the traffic. 70th and Vine is extremely busy intersection, very dense and a huge amount of traffic, especially on Sundays when St. John's Church is being let out. Vine Street can be kind of crazy, and then of course, school days. So my suggestions are, and you guys have done improvements to the intersection at 70th and Vine, which we very much appreciate. It is more handicap accessible now. Ava's in the background. My five-year-old, it's her birthday today. Sorry. That's why we're not there in person. But what I'd ask you to consider, if you go for this project and there is TIF funding there, taking a close look at that intersection and traffic study, please, because I do feel like the lights could be better utilized and more efficient, especially during school times. I think that intersection can also be made safer with longer crossing walks and actually handicap accessible crosswalks. The corner specifically, that is northeast corner, there is a, you know, giant tall sign for the filling station, and that space is really not handicap accessible very well. Like it could be better designed if you redo that space. The sidewalks themselves are actually in really good condition, except one giant crack and a huge piece that is in front of the Hampton sign as you enter off of 70th Street, your first right into the shopping center after you pass the Vine intersection. That is the dangerous corner right there for two reasons. One, if you are coming down 70th Street and you want to take a right into Meadow Lane Shopping Center right after you pass the filling station, that's that hill and that bump. And if you, if the car behind you is not going to slow down, I've seen a lot of crashes there from people getting rear-ended. That's also a bad spot when you're coming out of the shopping center because there's a wall there that prevents the drivers from seeing the people on the sidewalk. And so again, people walking or riding bikes on the sidewalk, it's just a dangerous space there. I think that can be cleaned up and made safer. So I appreciate you looking into that. One last point on that traffic and safety is 70th and X Street. X Street is commonly used to get back through the neighborhoods, and it is a very, very busy street in that area. So I suggest a crosswalk, a handicap accessible, and it's like a small child biker-friendly accessible crosswalk at 70th and X Street that would cross 70th on X, that would be on the south side of that 70th and X intersection. Some of you have seen a recent letter, and I've talked about children on bikes and folks in handicap and wheelchairs that need, and do cross there commonly. There is a community center, preschool in these spaces. I would hope that, that we keep and we listen to the neighbors as to what their needs are for this neighborhood and what they're asking for, and that there's transparency and that there is an openness and a communication on both sides. So I, I, you know, hope that, that we can find that now, that a lot of people are aware of the project. Some of us just finding out recently. So we're trying to do our homework and better understand what this is. I cannot picture an apartment complex on that corner where the gas station is due to the traffic, due to the congestion, so forth. So I appreciate the talk about the traffic study. The last piece of it too, with traffic, that I want you to please consider is a, on 70th Street where Mickle is, you go further north, you have, it drops to a 25 mile an hour zone, where you have the flashing lights, you have to drop down to 25 miles an hour. There's not that on 70th and Vine. Why? This is a, you have smaller children, my daughter Ava sitting here weighs roughly 34 pounds. She'll be in kindergarten. There are kindergartners her size that ride bikes and walk across the intersection and across 70th and X Street. And we, I think safety is a big, big piece for both the city and the neighborhood, and I'm sure for everybody as well. So please consider putting a 25 mile an hour zone buffer for school zone times on 70th Street, stretching across Vine Street, past X, to help with the, the flow and the traffic is the biggest piece of it. My questions for Hampton specifically, and I'd love to have more conversations with Anne and anybody else, are what are you doing as far as environmentally friendly focused pieces of the buildings, of the materials? Are you doing any kind of solar? There's lots of opportunities, I think. And what is your plan that is in line with the comprehensive plan? Where is it as far as the climate action plan and some of the pieces where the city is going and where we as citizens want to see people heading in that direction? And are you talking about doing apartments on top of the shopping center? Like you see the retail mixed, because in the staff plan, that's described as that retail mixed idea. And from what your pictures just showed, I do not see apartments on top of there. So some of that is the confusion, I think, with people wanting to see the blueprints, essentially the plans, and what visually we'll be looking at. So that's another question. Is, is this a mixed retail? Because it is described in the staff plan as that, from what I could tell. And then the other piece with the apartment complex where the gas station is, again, is very curious on how that would be efficient. Absolutely. Okay, thank you very much. I will just, just for one, tell everybody that I appreciate you taking the time, whether it be the planning board, the city council, and all the people in Meadow Lane area, and everybody that's coming out to try to make this a better neighborhood. And I, I'd just like you to consider all those questions and pieces. So thank you very much for your time.
Any questions for, okay, thank you. All right. So testimony and opposition? Any testimony and opposition?
Commissioner Corr, we have one person that is on Zoom still wanting to testify.
Okay.
My name's Chris Bosick. My address is 8210 Dundee Drive. Thanks for listening in and listening to my testimony today. I was, I'm actually, was here to, for another agenda item, but felt the need to chime in on this one as I really thought it was interesting and a good project. So I'd like to voice my support on this, just in general for improvement to the area. I am a commercial realtor in town for the last 15 years, and so I work with a lot of tenants. I work with a lot of owners. And projects like this, projects like Dan Marvin referenced in the Piedmont Project, are vital to, to our neighborhood successes and our city successes. So I can personally say that, that our tenants, you know, the tenants I work with, the owners I work with would love to see, see this. And I, and I have the utmost confidence that the city will, will go through their, you know, the necessary requirements to, to make sure there's, there's, the TIF is adequately spent, the traffic patterns are, are, are correct. I did also want to chime in a little bit, even though it seems like a lot of time has been spent on this apartment project, this, this gas station with a, with a different owner. But I do want to acknowledge to the planning commission that the, that the current use is a tough one. I, I, I know I personally avoid that gas station and don't use it just because it is hard to get into and out of, you know, on that tight intersection. So I know it's challenging with environmental concerns and maybe the, the initial apartment idea, we'll take some relooking at, but I do definitely encourage Hampton and that property owner to try to bring that into this project because it would be really nice to see a better, higher, better use on that corner. So that's really all I have.
So come on up.
Hello. I don't know how this goes. My name's Benjamin McIntafer. I, I live at 315 Prestwick Road. That's in Meadow Lane. Real quick, for the guy who was just on Zoom, I looked up, he said he was at 8200 Dundee. Is that correct?
I don't remember.
Anyways, that's in Hillcrest. That's not Meadow Lane. So I don't know why he would be using a gas station in my neighborhood, and it's kind of weird. Whoo, so much to say. I'm not really in opposition of revitalizing the shopping center. It is aged, it's old. I do have issue with how some of the TIF is being asked for and some of the wording and in the staff report and in the study that I only received today. I would ask that the board would look into, I'm trying to bring it up myself here, so forgive me. So in the study itself, we defined some stuff. And it's interesting how things are worded. Anyways, take a look at how they're defining blight and how they're talking about sidewalks. I did about a 45-minute documentary last night, walking through the entire shopping center on camera. It's on YouTube right now. You can go view it. There's one sidewalk that is, it's adjacent to the gas station. I don't believe it's in the shopping center. It's, it's a part of the gas station that is, it's bad. It's really bad. But as far as the sidewalks on Vine Street, the sidewalk on 70th Street and the sidewalk on, I believe that's X, just north of the shopping center are, I don't know, there's sidewalks way worse than that in neighborhoods in Meadow Lane. So that's interesting. Vine Street itself, between 66th, where's that, 66th and 70th is, it's terrible. It's horrible. I documented that. I walked up and down the street just to kind of, just contrast what they're calling blighted in the shopping center relative to the street itself. It's just dissonant. It doesn't make sense. So I found that odd. I'm not saying don't repair the shopping center. I'm saying the words in your study are very strange. So yeah, a, a comment that was made with vacancies, the entire north side, I don't have information, so I could be wrong, but the entire north side of the shopping center appears vacant with exception to a daycare, maybe a law office, and there used to be, it used to be the old A's Hardware. Now it's like, it was like a rehabilitation or medical facility or something. I walked by it and it looks, it looks vacant. There's like one desk in there. It looks mostly empty. I don't know who works in there. It might be full. I'm not really sure. The surface area of the parking lot and the entrances and exits are in far better shape than the city streets. Just look at Vine Street. It's all on video. You can, I mean, it's just juxtaposed and is this blighted? But this isn't. It's very strange to me. I don't know how much funding they're asking for. They said they're putting a million dollars in. That's, that's awesome. I don't know. I'm in, I'm into improving the shopping center. I'm not into more residential on that location because any additional residential is going to be more foot traffic alone. Maybe they drive. Now that's another car, in and out. And that's on top of who already lives there. The same thing kind of applies to vacancies. So in the far back corner, there was a video store. That's, that's vacant. That's not open. Immediately next to that, that used to be Mail Plus, it appears open. And then you have Ace Hardware that eats up the rest of it. Going further down, Valentino's burnt down. The place next to that burnt down. Both of those are, nobody's in those places right now. I don't know if they're repairing them or what they're doing. Moving further down, there's, Honest Abe's has a couple. I don't know how many of those places they own, but they have another, I'm sorry. They have a, it looks vacant. Maybe they do something in there. I don't know what they do in there. But, so I'm just wondering if just filling those places is going to be additional traffic, just in the commercial aspect of it. That's not even residential. So I would question the occupation of who, who are the tenants? What is their, I mean, go square foot by square foot. Who's in this spot? Because if they, if they fix it up, then okay, there's, now there's a spot for someone to come fill in. That's added traffic. Yeah, I would say the landscaping by Honest Abe's is honestly probably the best it's looked in my entire life. I've been there since 1985. The gas station is old. They have free air. It's pretty convenient. I've used it a lot. I probably owe them a lot of money. I mean, it definitely needs improvement. The city left a vacant Star Tran stop right in front of the gas station on Vine, right there. And they tore the building down. They tore the bench out, but like the concrete's still there, the weeds are all over. So it looks terrible. You drive by there and it looks like, ooh, this is abandoned. And it's like, well, that was the city's bus stop. They just left it there. You know, there's a slab of concrete. And then the same, the same, on the northwest side of the shopping center, they had, they, where they moved the mailbox, there was a mailbox. They moved it over. There was a concrete slab. Anyways, so yeah, I'm not opposed to improving it. I wish Hampton would, you know, put some skin in the game and not ask for funding, to be completely honest with you. There's a lot of things that could be improved, and people aren't asking for funding. But I wish them the best. Please don't add any residential, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further testimony and opposition? Okay. Staff questions? So you want to have any questions for Dan? Okay.
I do not, no.
Applicant rebuttal? Yeah, I do have just a couple. Anne, they talked about the sidewalk in front of the gas station. So I assume that when you said you're going to do sidewalks kind of external, that is included in that one too?
I believe so. I'd have to confirm that, but I, I believe that's a part of the project. All right, and I...
Okay. I think really that was kind of... The other ones were all just questions about traffic, so.
Okay. Okay. Wonderful. And yes, I'll reiterate again, there is no residential as a part of this project. Yeah, Hampton is not proposing any residential on this site at all, so.
Go ahead, Dick.
Anne, will you be requesting a traffic study?
At this point, no, we won't be. Our, so, excuse me, let me take this off so you can hear me a little bit better. You get used to it. Anyway, so at this point, that our project is only to, you know, revitalize the center that's there. As you noted, the center is almost completely full, and it is our intention to keep those tenants. So we don't, this project is not intended to increase capacity or increase trips to the center more than marginally. And as well, we're also not changing the layout. the center more than marginally, and as well, we're also not changing the layout of the center at all, so that would really hinder any ability to, where we're talking about changing access points, there's just no plan to do any work that would allow that right now. So no, that's not a part, not something we're anticipating requesting at this time.
Okay, thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
I'll move and close public hearing, Beckius.
Second, Campbell.
Jerry.
Okay. Ball, or I'm sorry, Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Did I skip one?
Beckius. Yes.
Core.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I'll move, we approve comprehensive plan conformance 21011.
Second, Campbell.
Discussion.
Neighborhood shopping centers are vital to the success of Lincoln and neighbors, neighborhoods themselves as well. I'm looking forward to seeing the redevelopment that Hampton has proposed here. I find that the redevelopment plan falls well within the comprehensive plan and will be supporting the amendment.
I agree with Tom and frankly, I was pleased that Dan brought up the comparison to Piedmont and and the changes that have been, that that has brought to that neighborhood and the importance that that neighborhood center has served in that neighborhood, I think is a great blueprint and and map for this important neighborhood as well.
I'm in total concurrence with both comments. It's important to keep neighborhood shopping centers in place and and full, and I think this will go a long ways to doing that.
I I agree with my fellow, and it's well utilized and I think that that's great. And facelift is nice, and I think it'll last long in the future then, or Jerry.
Okay, this is for finding of conformance for the proposed new Meadow Lane shopping center redevelopment plan. Campbell.
Yes.
Edgerton.
Yes.
Raymond Yost.
Yes.
Shear. Beckius.
Yes.
And Core.
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero. Okay, the next public hearing items, there's two associated items, I will call it together. Item 4.1A is change of zone 21011 from AG Agricultural District to R3 Residential District and the associated preliminary plat 21001 for a preliminary plat encompassing approximately 62.7 acres more or less, consisting of 140 residential lots with associated waivers. Both of these are on property generally located at 420 South 84th Street. Staff recommendation for the change of zone is conditional approval and staff recommendation for the preliminary plat is conditional approval. I will note that this is final action on the preliminary plat unless appealed to the city council within 14 days. Are there any experte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I don't see any.
Are there any experte communications that took place or additional information you learned while visiting the site?
No. Okay, George.
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. The site location that we're going to be discussing is the site of the former Spirit Park Soccer Fields. 84th Street is to the west, A Street is to the distant south, O Street is just off the map to the north, and it's surrounded mostly by urban development already. We have the State Farm Office Complex to the west, Shadow Creek Development to the north, Hillcrest Heights to the east, and then White Horse Development and the Mopac Trail to the south. So this request is a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R3 Residential over approximately 62.7 acres, and this is to facilitate the preliminary plat, which I will talk about momentarily, that proposes 140 residential lots for single family. The proposal aligns with the comprehensive plan by changing the zoning to allow for urban density residential development on a property that is adjacent existing urban infrastructure and near existing services and arterial streets. The condition of approval for this change of zone is that the applicant signs a zoning agreement concerning the installation of one half of Ranch Gate Road crossing at the Mopac Trail, which that is the connection to the south to the White Horse Development, the installation of Hackberry Lane connection to Anthony Lane, which I will talk about further momentarily, which is to the east, and then provisions for parkland dedication, all of these items in an agreement before city council approves the change of zone. So moving on to the preliminary plat, the preliminary plat again proposes 140 residential lots that are intended for single-family use on approximately 62.7 acres. The lots will follow R3 zoning for lot size with the type of housing, whether it's single-family attached or detached, as allowed for the heightened lot requirements. The development will have six street connections as proposed, which include three connections to the north through the existing Shadow Creek Development, a proposed connection to the west for when State Farm property would redevelop in the future, a proposed connection to the south to White Horse across the Mopac Trail via Ranch Gate Road, a connection to the Hillcrest CUP to the southeast, and then, and all of these streets will be public streets. And then as a condition of approval, the staff recommendation is for an additional seventh connection to Hillcrest Heights to Hackberry Lane, which I'll talk about here in just a second. So Hillcrest Heights is a subdivision that was platted to the east in 1956, and it was platted with public right-of-way that was dedicated for Hackberry Lane, which, this is a 60-foot width right-of-way, and it's approximately in the midsection of the subdivision and adjoins on the east side of the proposed development of Hidden Hills. The physical street was not installed at the time of plating, however, the right-of-way exists and connects to Anthony Lane, which is the, one of the two north-south major streets in Hillcrest Heights. So the applicant has requested as part of the waivers, a waiver for Block 5, which Block 5 is on the east, east side of the development, a waiver for Block 5 for the connection to Hackberry Lane in Hillcrest Heights, and the applicant is proposing that the development does not connect to the platted right-of-way for Hackberry Lane. And they point to drainage issues in the area that will be a challenge to address without any adverse impact to neighboring properties in Hillcrest Heights. In this case, the proposed right-of-way of Hackberry Lane was previously established for future connection. The connection would afford another means of street connection, which is consistent with the subdivision ordinance, it would afford a means of ingress from the east. So with this additional connection, you'd have, you'd have seven ways in and out of the development, so traffic would be dispersed as opposed to just going one or two ways in and out. In addition, Lincoln Fire and Rescue does not recommend approving without the connection to Anthony Lane. They note that their goal in general is to make their travel time, which is a segment of the total emergency response time, as short as possible. This is especially important for medical emergencies such as heart attack and also with fires. They point out that a fire doubles in size every 30 seconds, and then when you add more time, it increases the likelihood that the fire cannot be contained to its room of origin. It should be noted that eliminating the connection would still allow the lots at the northern end of the cul-de-sac to be reached within 3.24 minutes within their four-minute travel time goal. However, the elimination of the connection adds around 1.4 minutes to the response time from the nearest fire station, 16 at North 98th and Boathouse Road. Now, they could reach this street Luna Court from the west if there was a street connection, however, there is a very significant drainage way and and wetlands that exist to the west. So a street location at this location would involve more costs and more drainage impacts, whereas the drainage on the east side of the property in the area of the street connection is more localized drainage, it's not wetlands, it's not a flood plain or minimum flood corridor. Localized drainage areas are routinely crossed, this is not something that unusual. So the applicant is requesting to reduce their expense at the expense of emergency services response time. It should be noted that in the original submittal, Luna Lane did connect to Hackberry Lane, but that this was removed with the current submittal. Staff and the applicant discussed this street connection, including LTU watershed review for drainage, and the connection, again, is not extraordinary in terms of design. So this is one of the waivers that is requested for the street connection. The other waivers include Block 1, a lot maximum block length waiver, and that's due for a couple of reasons. You have the Mopac Trail on the south, you also have the State Farm Property on the west. A second connection to the State Farm Property could have been required due to block length, however, the one connection in the northwest part of the development would align with the existing driveway as you go into the soccer fields, and that connects with 84th Street, which has a median opening and traffic signal. Another waiver is for design standards to allow for sanitary sewer mains to run opposite the street grades. This is typical and is justifiable. There's another design standard waiver to allow manholes to exceed 15 feet of the sanitary sewer depth. LTU does not object to that. And there's also a design standard waiver for some curves for tangent lengths in the northwest and southeast part of the subdivision, which, again, LTU is not opposed to. In terms of pedestrian connections, there will be an east-west connection for pedestrian way that will generally follow the alignment of the existing sidewalk, if you're familiar with the soccer fields, there's a sidewalk that runs west to east near the concession building. In addition, a meandering pedestrian connection is proposed in the northeast part of the development that would connect to Hackberry Lane and Hillcrest Heights and then also South 90th Street across the drainage way. I would mention there is a proposed park, so there will be parkland dedication that's in this Outlet, Outlet D in the southwest, and that will abut or be adjacent to the Mopac, and negotiations are still underway on that. We don't have a change of zone agreement quite ready, but that's, doesn't need to be decided today, that would be before the city council. So I will stop there. I would mention that we do have staff, other staff here today, including Pat Borer from Lincoln Fire and Rescue that could speak in further details on some of these issues. With that, I can answer any questions.
Dick.
Is the road that comes on off of 84th that would connect with Andrea Avenue, is that a, is that a city street or is it private?
That's private, that's not a public right-of-way.
Okay.
So it wouldn't be, you know, some of the neighbors wrote in and they were requesting, you know, construction traffic to be rerouted out of that area, I think if I read those right. We couldn't dictate that because that's a private street, is that correct?
Correct. Not, the, we're waiting essentially for the redevelopment of that property before a public way could be established.
Go ahead.
George, it looks like that, so, I'm talking about, is it Hackberry? It looks like just north of there, there was another connection into Hillcrest that had not been used when Shadow Creek developed out. Can you speak as, a little bit as to why that connection was not used when Shadow Creek was developed out?
This is the the historic plat, I think you're referring to this.
I am, yes, sir.
Yes. I can't speak to that, maybe others can, I wasn't involved in that prior development for Shadow Creek.
Okay, it looks like Mr. Hendrickson's on his way up.
Steve Hendrickson at the Planning Department. Unfortunately, when Shadow Creek was approved, that drainage way, that right-of-way was right in the middle of basically a floodway on our map. So in looking at that, that was a quite significant drainage way, and both the city and the staff agreed that it was going to be a significant cost to try to cross that drainage way. So that drainage way continued then along, along the west, if you have the site plan So that drainage way basically comes down and through here.
Sure.
Because there's also a street connection that would be required between the two sides internal to the development, but because of that significant drainage way, we're not able to get the connection over in this direction either. So that one block actually has two separate waivers, one that goes to the west and one that goes to the east. We understand the one to the west because of that same drainage way and the cost to cross it, but the relatively minor little drainage that crosses here isn't a minimum flood corridor, it's not a flood plain, it's not a floodway, it's just the type of drainage that you might have in any circumstance.
Okay, thank you. And then, George, the, I think I recall in your testimony that you stated, take away a minute and a half of response time, but as proposed by the applicant, what would be the response time currently from Boathouse?
3.24 minutes would be the, as proposed, would be the response time, which is within the four minutes of their travel time goal.
Okay, thank you.
George, we had a question about the, that meandering pedestrian walkway that's kind of on the northern edge of this. Can you, is that, is that required for connectivity between the two sides of this development?
Yes, that's a required, one of the required pedestrian connections where the block length exceeds 1,000 feet, there's a pedestrian connection required.
And so, does it have to be elevated because of the flood plain issues?
I might let the engineers speak to that. I know there was some concern about the proximity of that particular trail to a neighbor to the north, but I'm not sure on the answer to that question.
Okay. Could you point out where it is?
Yes, I'm sorry, the trail is here, so it'd be at the very north edge, Shadow Creek is to the north.
Thank you.
I think you might be getting an answer here.
Tim Zock with LTU Watershed. Yes, that trail is elevated. I believe the engineer's proposing to do detention behind that as well, so it is elevated above the drainage way.
So it'd be kind of like a, when you say retention, is it going to act kind of like a dam there or?
Yeah, a dam or embankment.
And is that, is that retention required at that spot or?
It's not required at that location, they're just required to reduce the flows leaving the site at that location, so they could put it anywhere on their site, but that's where they're kind of choosing to meet, kind of two requirements at one location.
Okay, thank you.
Tim, could you please state your address?
555 South 10th Street.
Thank you, I know what it is, but for the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions while Molly's up here?
No.
Okay. Any other questions for George?
No.
Okay, applicant.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission, Danae Kalkowski, Seacreston Kalkowski Law Firm, 1128 Lincoln Mall, Suite 105, and Mark Palmer, I'll let him introduce and give his address.
Good afternoon, Mark Palmer, Olson, 601 P Street.
Mark and I are representing Southwest Folsom Development LLC. They're developing this approximately 63-acre site of the former YMCA soccer fields. I'd like to ask for additional time because I'm going to present and then Mark's going to talk a lot about the Hackberry connection, so it works better for both up here and then can answer questions at the same time. But I want to give you just a little background, the owner of this property or soon-to-be owner, Southwest Folsom Development, is the same entity that's developing the Southwest Village Heights residential area out in southwest Lincoln, and its principal's Tom and- southwest Lincoln, and its principals, Tom and Zach White, and Bob and Michelle Benis, have a long history of working on development in Lincoln, and in working with the city to provide quality developments that are a win-win for them, you know, and the community. As part of the acquisition of this site, in fact, from L P S, we'll be trading them a site for a potential future school in southwest Lincoln, so this gets to serve a lot of different roles. So, as George mentioned, and some of what I say may be a little bit repeat from George, but I think there's just some points, you know, that we need to make with respect to the applications, but they do involve a change of zone to R3, typical residential zone, and the preliminary plat for 140 lots. This is a challenging site. You know, we're coming kind of late to the game. We're in the middle of a section with, you know, 84th and 98th and O and A, right smack, you know, right smack in the middle. So, that means we're forced to deal with conditions and infrastructure that are already in place, or are already planned. And so, we also have this major drainage way that goes down our site, which has natural and mitigated wetlands, which making, you know, a crossing it virtually impossible other than at the south end, which is where we are making an east-west connection. And then, we also have big L E S transmission line that runs all the way along the east side. So, the proposed preliminary plat in front of you today is the result of a good faith effort to work with the city to address the site challenges and accommodate them where it's feasible and where it's practical. The plan only shows single-family lots, showing sensitivity to our already-existing acreage neighbors to the east and our residential neighbors to the north and the south. In fact, it's pretty low density. We only have like 2.2 dwelling units per acre on this site. The city has no park site yet within this section, so we are working with the city to allow them to acquire property for the city park site that will be adjacent to their trail, which was the location they requested. The city required, as part of the White Horse Development, a connection to Ranch Gate Road, which goes across city-owned property, and they've required the White Horse developers to pay for half of the road going across the city property, and we're picking up the other half of that cost. So, that's a cost we wouldn't typically have that's off of our property and onto somebody else's property. And in addition, as George mentioned, we're making all of the roadway connections, with one exception, to our neighboring properties. One to the east, three to the north, the southwest, and to the southeast. The only item that we are in disagreement with is the ability to accommodate the street connection and construction of Hackberry Lane to the east, and that would be from our property line east, on, outside of our property boundaries to the east, over to Anthony Lane within the acreage development. We held an in-person, yee-haw, neighborhood meeting. It was, actually, it was great. It was really great. And we had good attendance. Main areas of concern were, everybody obviously interested in the type of lots and the density, which we've addressed with what we're proposing, phasing and construction traffic, and we are likely to start our phasing up here in this corner, and it does mean the construction traffic is largely going to go through Shadow Creek. We don't have a lot of other alternatives. Those are public streets intended, you know, for public traffic. They have a lot of construction traffic in there now, you know, with their own development. Second phase likely to be, to be down here, and then make that connection, so then there would be a connection to A Street. So, we are anticipating at the time we do the second phase, there'd be a second way, you know, in and out of the development. Drainage from our site, they were concerned that we weren't pushing more drainage, particularly the acreage owners to the east, as there is quite a bit of drainage running down through the backs of their lots. There's a bunch of wetlands kind of down and through there, too. Obviously, our drainage is being accommodated with our drainage plan, and I think Mark's going to talk about it a little bit, but maybe not making the Hackberry Lane connection may actually improve some of the drainage issues for the neighbors to the east. And then, obviously, they were very concerned about the Hackberry Lane connection and are not supportive of that connection, but they're here to talk on their own behalf with regard to that. So, just, you know, the only item of disagreement really is the Hackberry Lane connection. We've submitted motions to amend for both the change of zone because of the zoning agreement and for the preliminary plat that would remove that requirement. Hillcrest Heights, as George mentioned, was planted in 1956. It's a rural acreage development, rural roads, rural, you know, ditches. Right-of-way for two street connections to the west was dedicated, but the streets weren't actually constructed, and of course, Tom mentioned, that street connection to the north was not built because it wasn't planned to be in a very good location that actually physically worked when the time came for development adjacent to it. We're now in 2021 with urban roadway design standards and urban drainage criteria that didn't exist in the 50s, and we believe it's not practical to build Hackberry Lane all the way over to Anthony Lane without impacts to the abutting acreages and without a price tag and a liability to this developer that's just, that's not practical. And unfortunately, we have to consider costs. I'd like to say we don't, that it makes sense to have the connectivity. We don't, you know, we don't not support connectivity. We're showing the sidewalk connection because connectivity is important, but we do have to consider the price tag because every dollar it costs gets passed on to the lot buyer, and what gets passed on to the lot buyer gets passed on to the home buyer. And so, it is important to consider, is this something that makes practical sense to require of this development, 140 lots, 63 acres? And I'm going to turn it over and let Mark talk a little bit more about the specifics because it's not just a dollar and cents item, but that does come into play by the time you accommodate all of the issues that would need to be addressed.
Thanks, Danae. This is 50 acres of local drainage. This is not a small little area. It's 50 acres with no storm sewer. There's 20 acres that flows in the rear of these property owners through here, and to just give you a, an idea of what that looks like, it's actually piped behind this, this property here, and then it's open flow through here, but it's a, it's a wet channel, and 20 acres is a lot of water to be running through people's rear property lines.
And you're kind of right along that. You might just show where the property line runs.
Sorry. Just, this is, this is our property line. This orange area or red area is the area that drains actually eastward today and runs through about in this position, and then comes down these, these rear property lines. So, these property owners, not only do they have drainage in their front because they have ditches, they also have a stream basically running along their rear property line. One of the, one of the advantages of not connecting this road is if you actually, and sorry, we drone flew this, we have a, we have a problem that we can't really get on much in the way of property over here because this is not our property. We can, we can walk around on the right-of-way, we can, we can fly a drone, we got some aerial images, but interestingly, this creates a ridge almost through here. This back property line is probably eight to 10 feet higher than the ditch just to the east of it along that Hackberry alignment, and all the way along here, water under the power lines is staying on this side and draining to the north and to the west. We have the, the opportunity by not connecting this area to where we can run our streets draining north, and we can actually reduce the amount of water of the land area that's draining to these backyards by about eight acres. So, that's eight, 8.8 actually, almost nine. That's, that's nine acres less that would be draining of the 50 acres that would be draining through these properties.
So, would you have to install a culvert if you did provide the connection to Hackberry?
That's next.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, let's, let's move on to that because just, just, and we haven't, that's one of, for, for, for stuff to say that this is standard, this is not an easy fix, and we honestly don't know. I mean, I joke that this is the last piece of the jigsaw out here of this area, but for this area, we don't know where the water's going in these roads, in these rural road sections. Sorry, I'm hopping around, but you look at, every driveway crossing has a culvert. Some are bigger, some are elliptical pipes, some are bricked in and have bridges across the ditches, and so, actually knowing what the flow is in any of these, any of these rural roads requires almost that whole 50 acres to be surveyed and to get a better understanding and actually a study of where does this water go, because it's our, our thinking that a majority of it is ending up flowing either in the back of these lots, in fact, yeah, that 50 acres is flowing either in the back of the lots, or it's either side of this Anthony Lane, and at different points, it's probably hopping from one side to the other, just depending on what driveway blocks and impediments there are along the way. There's also a challenge with this house to the north. It's about two feet lower than the street on the southern end where this road would be. It's about even with the street, about 100 feet to the north where their driveway comes in, so they are actually lower than the street. And so, we've got to pick up drainage in the ditches, we've got to pick up drainage in the back, and when we've, we've looked at it, we're at about $375,000 worth of culverts, grading, I mean, you start, I can, I can start listing off the items. It's not, if this was, if this was a street that was built and we were tying on in this location, we would be tying on because it's an existing street that we need to connect to, but just the culverts, the grading, the erosion control, the drainage study, easement acquisition, there would need to be construction easements either side of this that need to be acquired. 404 permits, there's wetlands in these ditches, there's, I don't know what's classed as a channel, but there's a lot more to this than just connecting to a street or connecting to a, a standard drainage area.
And just to kind of put Mark's number into perspective, you know, if we have 140 lots and it's a $375,000 cost, we're talking about almost $2,700 per lot cost to make this one-block street connection. It's a significant.
The other question, though, the concern we've had is whoever designs this is basically opening up their liability for any flooding of anything that would occur down here, and so, that's, that's been a, a big question is whoever builds this, you're probably, regardless of what really happens, if one of these properties flood, you know who would be coming back to, to be, to be talking to, and it's probably the engineer, it's probably the developer, it's the people that built this road. And so, that's, I mean, if this is a city, if this is a city need, then the city should need it, should, should build it, and for 375,000 and, and from what we can propose, which is, sorry, I've got too many, we can actually make this drainage area, that red area, this is, this is how it is today, we can actually make it less that's draining to their backyards by keeping this drainage all going northward and staying clear of that, and I've got, sorry, I've, I've got, this is, this is how, this would be those, those properties are backed down here to the, to the west, or to the east, sorry, this is west of that tree line, the electrical lines right here. This is the draw, basically the drainage way that that water is all flowing from, that we would utilize. You keep, you keep nine acres off their properties and, and make a situation, a bad situation a little bitter.
About one last one, which I think is helpful a little bit, just to show, so Mark's kind of, is that backwards?
Might be upside down.
Here we go. Just to superimpose kind of where that right-of-way is, where it is in existence to the existing homes, so, and this neighbor's here to talk, but I think in the 90s, there was a waiver granted to allow this building to be constructed closer to that right-of-way, and so you're dealing with an existing building that's only about 10 feet from the, you know, from the existing right-of-way and another building here, so you've got, there would be significant impacts to those property owners in trying to, to get something constructed here. We're not unsensitive to the connectivity, we're not unsensitive to the response time. The good news is, you know, we've got a brand-new fire station up in Waterford, and so, we're well within the, you know, city's four-minute response time. Wouldn't it be better to be, you know, two instead of three, ideally, but that's just the reality of, of, you know, a growing community, and I think we just, we have to weigh the practicality of what it, not only what it adds, but also what it would cost to future home and lot buyers. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
No, don't have any.
Thank you.
Testimony in support of this application.
My name is Terry Nedden Rip, and my wife, Marley, and I live at 550 Anthony Lane, and we've lived there since 2004, and that's within the Hillcrest Heights neighborhood. And I currently serve as president of our neighborhood association, and with an open area bordering our neighborhood to the west, we acknowledge the reality and the fact that a new development in that location is to be expected. So, it is not our intent to be oppositional to the Hidden Hills development, and we do want to be reasonable and open-minded during this planning process as things go forward. And we, we do appreciate that, that a proposed development features single-family housing, which of course aligns with our neighborhood plan, and Mary Bell Avery, another member in our association, will be providing testimony regarding lot sizes. Now, we, we generally support the developer's proposal, and specifically, their plan to not build the street connection up to Anthony Lane. Our thinking is that building the street would cause significant water flow and drainage damages, or difficulties, and I will note that Ryan Sullivan and Billy Joe Smith, also from our association and neighborhood, will provide you with specific information related to water flow and drainage and a couple of other areas. So, again, I would just repeat that generally, we support the developer's proposal, and specifically, specifically their plan not to build the street connection up to Anthony Lane. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? Okay.
No questions.
Testimony in support.
My name's Ryan Sullivan. I live at 609 Anthony Lane in Hillcrest neighborhood, and I'm testifying in general support of the developer's plan as proposed. I'm the vice president of the Hillcrest Neighborhood Association, but I'm mainly testifying in my personal capacities to share some information that I think will be of value to the commission and its determination on this matter, mainly as it relates to the developer's proposal to not install Hackberry Lane, which I support. Is that right side up? Hope so. This, this diagram is intended to provide just a wide view to show where my property is in relation to the development. That's mine there on the right, just below that Hackberry Lane right-of-way. This next one is just to show in the existing terrain, very similar to what the engineer showed you around my property and the Hackberry area. So, I can list a number of reasons why I, I think this is, adding this connection is not appropriate or feasible, but I want to focus my limited time just on the concerns related to drainage. So, Hackberry Lane has been plotted for over 70 years. Since that time, the surrounding area has been developed with, with the assumption that Hackberry would never be built. Everything around it is designed as if it does not exist. Over that time, there's been drainage design contemplating that Hackberry would not be installed, and then just the natural flow of water, just carving out, carving out the ground. Adding Hackberry was certainly disruptus, and not just in a, in a minor way. This is not a typical situation as the city staff had, had indicated. This is not a typical situation as the city staff had indicated. Obviously, if you're going to add a road, you're always going to have some drainage issues that you have to deal with, and some water flow issues. But the issues here are unique, mainly due to the, just the sheer volume of the water that goes through this area. So, in this diagram, I attempt to provide a visual of that. I'm not an artist or a graphic designer, but I was able to add some colorful lines to the overlay. Every time it rains, a small creek forms with no fish. Forms in the front and the rear of my home, as outlined by those dark blue lines, kind of give you an idea of the creeks. I wouldn't quite call them a river, but at least a creek or a stream. On the front, the grass ditch fills with water, and for normal rain, it's about a foot deep, three to six feet wide. During a heavy rain, I've measured debris fields 10 to 14 feet wide. And then, when we get a major rainfall event, which has occurred three times in the three years that we've lived there, the water actually overcomes our culvert and goes across our driveway and then on to Anthony. On the backside of the house, the creek forms every time it rains. Heavy rains, it fills up my whole back area of the yard, as shown in that light blue area. Much of the western section of what would be Hackberry is also completely underwater, as is much of my neighbor's backyard to the north, as she can testify about. I'm certainly no engineer, but as it's been explained to me by the several engineers who have scoped this area out, adding Hackberry would make all of this much, much worse. And not adding Hackberry as proposed would actually make it better. So you can see why I'm in support of not adding Hackberry. They're also telling me that it would be virtually impossible to do it without affecting the neighboring properties in a negative way, just because of that narrow area that they'd have to carve into. I'd in fact be happy to meet with city staff onsite to actually show them how precarious the drainage issues are, and how disrupting this water flow is going to really lead to a lot of problems. Same kind of problems they were concerned about when they considered adding the road up north. Something else that Mark had, what the developer had mentioned was the elevation drop.
One minute.
It's actually, I've scoped, and it's actually a 13-foot elevation drop between what is that yellow line there on the left and the first blue line. So a very steep elevation drop that would have to be accounted for, so you'd have to spread this out very wide.
Do you point the two lines you're referencing?
Yeah, sorry. There's the yellow line there. I know my property, I forget, not everybody knows my property. And then that blue line. So it's just, it's just not quite a straight drop, but it's close to 45-degree drop. So that's going to, you know, that's going to obviously, I think that's going to cause a lot of the extra difficulty in trying to figure out how to engineer that. And then also, just as the, as the, I'd just say, is the developer's proposed plan is aimed to ensure that the water flow is not made worse in our neighborhood, could actually be made a little bit better, and it flows in the direction that it naturally should, as opposed to being impeded and making matters worse. The other thing I want to point out, as did they, is the, in 1990, there was a reduction in the setback from 50 feet to 10 feet. So I, personally, living right there, have some concerns about a road being 10 to 12 feet from my prop, from my home. And then also, my well is right there as well, so it'd actually be one or two feet from my well. So I have concerns with that. So for those reasons and those expressed by the engineers, the people that know what they're doing, and others, I encourage you to adopt this plan as it is proposed by the developer, and I would, which would include no connection to Hackberry, but would include six additional connections, which is average or above average for a neighborhood this size. And with that, I'd answer any questions if you have them.
No.
All right. Thank you.
Further testimony in support.
My name is Billy Joe Smith, and I am, my address is 517 Anthony Lane. So Ryan is to the south, and I am to the north. I had a list of things that I was going to go through, but hearing the, excuse me, I should back up. I am in support of the development plan to go forward with the residential area and not to build Hackberry Lane. I had a list of concerns that I was going to raise, and then hearing the development side of things, this is actually the first time I'm hearing that my house is lower, and I will be severely impacted by any water drainage areas. So I'm going to focus on that this afternoon. And Ryan covered it very well, the issues, the drainage on both sides, the east and the west sides of our lots. And he is very accurate, when it rains, we have water running down, you know, both the east and the west sides, significant water. So hearing, you know, that building this street could bring more water in that will have to be mitigated is very concerning to me. I will say, I've only lived at that location for about three years, so we have not been there, my family has not been there very long. We do not have a formal basement to our house. We have what's considered probably more of a storm shelter that's off the garage. But in the time that's living there, there's a sump pump in that basement, and it runs continuously and pumps water back out to the west-side drainage area. And that never shuts off. It runs continuously. So I do have concerns that if this street goes through and it brings more water issues, what that's going to mean for me, and who will be responsible for that? Just like the developer said, are they the ones that are then responsible for that if my, my, our area, our residential area continues to flood and, you know, there's significant issues there? So I am not against the development at all. I am for the sidewalk going through, if that's approved, to bring connection to our neighborhoods, definitely for that. But the water, the drainage issues are my biggest concern. I also have concerns on that 60-foot easement, I mean, looking at that on the pictures, that's, it's huge. And while we've always known that that's an easement, you know, it's not our land, we do kind of consider that, but that easement itself, just building it, putting that street in, what impact would that be just to my lot itself? That is, we have trees within there, as Ryan said, his well is right there, my well is right there, next to that easement. What's impacted, that sort of thing? So I guess I would, I would very much appreciate if you would consider those water issues as the biggest, the most important impact to this neighborhood. And then, you know, I guess my concern as an existing resident is, if I do have issues, then is it all on me then to correct those afterwards? Or what in the future would be the plan to help mitigate those issues if there are, if that street is built and it does cause additional issues?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony in support.
My name is Mary Avery. My husband Stan Campbell and I live at 1111 East Hillcrest Drive. So we're south of everybody who's been talking to you, but I definitely support what they have said about the connection. But I'd like to show you another concern I'd like to share with you. We bought our house 25 years ago this month, at the dead end of East Hillcrest Drive. And now, we have a corner lot, which is just fine, because we understood that we would be annexed by Lincoln, and someday, our city-close and country-quiet neighborhood would be part of the city, and now we are. And as development has begun around us, we have been pleased, very pleased, with communication and the cooperation from the planning department. Because we've had a lot of that. But especially their recognition of the need for land-use transition between our low-density acreage neighborhood, and in my case, in my husband's case, the high-density Hillcrest CUP, which is directly south of us. This is my lot, 1111 East Hillcrest, and I'm referring to this development, which is already in progress. So we do appreciate the planning department's help with that. We, while we are in support of the Hidden Hills development, as my neighbors have previously explained, I have a concern about the size of the proposed lots, 41 through 57. This is 41, and they go all the way, I'm moving south to 57. As currently plotted, these 17 lots are 65 feet wide, as measured on the east side, which I'm showing you here. That means for each of the four properties in our acreage development, 1111, my home, 1015, 925, and 919 East Hillcrest, for each of our four properties, there will be about four houses along our west property lines. There's 17 total lots here. I understand they're single-family lots, and we were thankful for that. But in contrast, when you look north in the Hidden Hills development, lots 35 to 40, which are these, one, two, three, four, six lots up here, those lots are from 83 to 105 feet wide, as measured on their east sides. You've heard a lot about our acreage neighborhood and how we appreciate the ambiance there. In keeping with the concerns about making the land-use transition, our request is to reconsider the size of these lots along the southernmost part here, and if they could be more comparable to the size of the lots to the north. Obviously, I'm asking to reduce the density, as you can see from, my computer did not do this, I did all this by hand.
It's a very nice job.
So that is, that is my request.
Thank you.
Even taller within the lines.
I know. I'll leave this for you if you want it, but your folder's gone.
That'd be great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony in support. Any other testimony in support of this project? Okay. Testimony in opposition. Any testimony in opposition?
My name is John Zaleski. I live at 346 South 89th Street, which is in the Shadow Creek neighborhood. It's in the middle street of those three connecting streets. While I'm not overall opposed to development in this area, I am opposed to the plat as it is currently proposed.
Sorry. Go ahead.
That was fast for me. I believe that the plan does not serve the greater public good, is not addressing the impact on the surrounding areas and creates an unsafe neighborhood during the site development and beyond, specifically to our area to the north. That area has only one entry and exit, and that's the intersection at 90th Street and O. The developer is proposing to add 140 residences with the intent to add only one additional entry/exit from the development. That intersection at 90th and O is already congested, especially at start and end times of Southeast Community College. It's not uncommon for the people leaving the Shadow Creek neighborhood to sit through several traffic cycles in order to get on to O Street during those times. When the site is completely developed, the number of vehicles in and out of that area will total somewhere between 1,000 and 1,400 a day. If we're moving the traffic all to 1A Street entry/exit through a winding residential area, or to the north at 90th and O, most of that traffic, in my experience, because I've lived there, is going to go to 90th and O because there's a light. Taken into consideration, the construction traffic that's going to go in and out of that area for probably a considerable length of time, this area is probably a number of years before it's fully developed, that construction traffic, not just the dirt moving and that sort of thing during that time, but construction traffic, delivery of lumber and building materials and whatnot when the houses are being built, is a significant concern, because the vast majority of that's going to come in on 90th Street and enter this new development through 90th. I live a block over from that, but the people, my neighbors that live on 90th Street, there are seven small children that live in a one-block area. It's very common for them to go to the neighbors' houses and play with each other and whatnot. To have heavy construction traffic through that area without any other way to get in or out, I think is unfortunate, to say the least. As you might guess, and I'm assuming that you've been up through this area, Shadow Creek is not fully developed, so there are not sidewalks through the whole area. There are empty lots that haven't been sold yet. So if people want to go for a walk, or children ride their bikes, or that sort of thing, we have to use the street. So that in combination with construction traffic coming in and out of there for a number of years, is just a horrible situation to start with. It's actually dangerous, in my opinion. What do I propose? I don't necessarily expect the developer to do this, but I think before this area should be developed, an entry/exit should be considered to the west. There is some talk on the northwest corner of this connecting with the driveway that goes through the State Farm property. I don't believe that's practical. There's some mention of when that area gets redeveloped. I don't know where that's even coming from. That South State Farm building has only been there for like 20 years. That area is not going to be redeveloped. In my opinion, the only feasible possibility is to deliver a connecting road from 84th Street along the south side of that property occupied by State Farm to connect with this new development. It would connect with 84th Street just north of the Trailhead Building that sits on 84th Street. That would allow us to remove the pedestrian crosswalk and also the light at the State Farm property at Cherrywood, because that driveway then could connect to whatever that new street would be. That would also allow another entry point for the construction traffic to come in through a non-residential area along that south side. I don't see State Farm, well, it's not State Farm, the property is owned by someone other than State Farm. I don't see them agreeing to allow a street to be built through the middle of that campus.
Time. Can you wrap up your testimony?
Yes. That area is too narrow, the driveway that's there, you couldn't, you couldn't build a normal street between those two buildings without taking that communication tower out. I'm sure that's a significant source of income for the property owner, I don't think they would agree to that. So those are the concerns that we have in my neighborhood. Be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you for coming up. Testimony in opposition. Testimony in opposition. Staff questions?
I don't have any.
It seems like I had one, but I can't remember anything right now.
I do have a question for George. George, you had mentioned that that driveway in the State Farm, in between the two buildings, is a private street, but that it would potentially change to a city-owned street. When might that happen?
That's a fair question. There's not a timetable that's known right now. It would be when that property owner, in the future, whether it's five years, ten years, or twenty years, decides that there's a different use for that property, a more substantial use than what's there now. And then it would involve, you know, potentially a use permit or some other permit where we would look at a, a street right-of-way.
Well, that building is for lease now. It still would be owned by the owner, but I noticed there was a sign for, for leasing it.
I think there is a tenant in there.
Is there?
Any other questions for George?
I'd like to talk a little bit about emergency response times. In particular, I guess my question is, is when we were talking about the difference between the one point, one minute and twenty-odd seconds or so, that would be the difference between building out Hackberry Lane. Are we talk, I, I wanna clarify the property that we're talking about. We are talking about the property on the north side of Blocks Five along Luna Court. Are those the, is that the property that we're concerned about response times?
Correct, and I might let LFR answer in better detail.
Good afternoon. Pat Bore, Lincoln Fire. And can you ask me the question again?
Sure. So I wanted to just generally address emergency response times and the, the difference in times that was in the staff report, and the properties, where, where that was, the properties that were focused on.
Okay, yep. Is Elmo on? I don't think it is yet.
While we're waiting, can I get your address, please?
Oh, yes. Eighteen oh-one Q, sorry.
Thank you.
All right. If you can see the box, the green box. So we calculated that time that you referenced, the basically one-point-four-minute difference between going through or going around. That property was the property, the subject property where we calculated the time. Everything south of there would be shorter, less of a difference, but that, that's the maximum, if you will, that's the maximum difference in time, that property.
Right. So George, that's the northernmost lot in that, along Luna Court. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So this is, so if you were visiting a property, if, if you had to respond to an emergency in the neighborhood to the east, how, if it, somewhere, someone along Anthony Lane's, how do you get to those properties?
Whatever street that connects to O Street, Anthony or Hillcrest, or whatever, I don't, I don't know the neighborhood that well. Whatever, again, you can see in this, I'm sorry.
Right, okay.
Yeah, right there.
And so for this property that we, you had circled, you'd be coming up from the south instead of going along Hackberry Lane.
That's correct. Without a connection, was that, without the Hackberry connection, you choose one of the other three connections that were identified in this picture, come off of O Street, choose one of those, and go all the way to the south, then come up to the green box, the property in question. Yes. That would be the response route, if there were no Hackberry Lane.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions about response time?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for George or other staff members? Okay, applicant rebuttal.
I just have a couple things to point out. So I, I pointed out at the very beginning, one of the constraints on this site is that we have that LES transmission easement along the east side. So that LES transmission easement, we, our property, we have the property line, which would be adjacent to the acreage neighbors. Then there's twenty feet, and then it starts a sixty-foot transmission line for LES. So we essentially have eighty feet of separation from the acreage lots before we even start the backyard of one of our lots. So there's already a pretty significant green space that will be maintained in separation, that will be maintained between those homes and the acreage lots to the east. So I think that's a, we felt was a pretty adequate transition, and then these are, are not small. They're still relatively mid-sized, single-family homes. With respect to the construction traffic, we kind of already had that discussion. Unfortunately, it, it's like this could be the next addition of Shadow Creek, and, and you would've had that much construction traffic going through the neighborhood. Second phase, there'll be another connection to A, and ultimately, there'll be two different connections down to A in, in ways to get out, and hopefully eventually over to Eighty-Fourth. But we're just sort of stuck with the reality, and that's unfortunately the situation when you have a developing area, is the first guys in have to deal with the traffic, you know, that comes for the, from the later development. I think those were the two kind of main things, but we'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
I, I noticed that you, your motions, your amendment motions, one is for the change of zone, and the other's for the preliminary plat. Is that correct?
That's correct, because the change of zone is requiring us to sign a zoning agreement, and it has the Hackberry, because they can't require the Hackberry connection under the prelim plat because it's off of our property. So it's being required as a condition of the zoning.
Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
I'll move that we close public hearing.
Second, Campbell.
Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I'll move that we approve change of zone two-one-zero-one-one.
Second, Campbell.
Um, I am gonna note that, oh, we can talk about that in just a second. I'm gonna say that even though we have to approve the things separately, we can talk about them at once.
Tom, are you?
I wanna add, I would be happy to. I would like to go ahead and make a motion to amend the change of zone as submitted by the developer. I think city staff has this information, Jerry. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. So just to talk about the entire site here, I, I think the, I find that the site conforms nicely to the existing neighborhood around it, including both the older development, Hillcrest Development to the east, but also the new development going on all around as well. I, I find that the, the six proposed means of, of access for the one-hundred-and-forty units proposed here seems to be sufficient for a neighborhood of this size, as does the emergency response times for the entire neighborhood. Those emergency response times for the entire neighborhood all fall within the City of Lincoln's goal of four-minute response times. I, I, I don't exactly know what to make, as I'm not an engineer, of, of the, the push and pull here between the city and the developer when it comes to Hackberry. However, I, I have, I, I find that we have a, a development here that has a lot of, a lot of access and fully meets the, the emergency response times, and then I have an existing neighborhood that says, "I don't want that." And, and I, I think that we can probably make a compromise here and, and not build Hackberry and not face detriment to any party here. So I will support the, the motions in general, but also the motions to amend as presented by the development, or the developer, excuse me.
Dick?
I also would be supporting with the amendment. I think I have more concerns for the neighbors to the east and the water situation that they have, and that this development's being very sensitive to that and trying to keep the water away from them as much as possible. So I think leaving Hackberry Lane out is pretty important.
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I'm, I appreciate the street connectivity that has been built into this development, the concern for, for the neighborhoods that are already developing around them. And I'm, I'm really excited about the parkland dedication as well. I think that's really important for this area, and I will be supporting this.
I see Tim hovering, okay. I, I think it's always challenging when we have kind of a middle section developing after kind of the outer portions have, like we have going on here. But we do have plenty of connections. I'm gonna support the waiver of, of Hackberry Lane not being built. I, I think, I've seen, I've seen a lot worse access to different pocket developments before, so I think that we have plenty of connections here for right now. And I'm hoping that this will alleviate some of that drainage issue that is going on right now. So I'll be interested to, to hear if that does kind of alleviate some of what's going on on Anthony Lane Lane right now. And I do want to maybe encourage, I know that that street light at Ninetieth and O Street is fairly new. If Public Works could maybe look at the timing on that. I think that since it's so new, maybe the cycle times need to be longer or something, 'cause I do drive that nearly every day, so I'm pretty familiar with that. Dick?
I think we'll have to approve the amendment first.
Yeah.
Correct.
So.
Did Mr. C?
I'm going to read that into the record.
Yeah, that's fine. Did Mr. C have anything that he needed to add?
Nope, he said no.
Okay.
Okay. Just for the record, I'm gonna read the motion to amend change of zone two-one-zero-one-one for east of South Eighty-Fourth Street, south of O Street, at Spirit Park Fields, as follows. Conditions of approval, the applicant signs a zoning agreement concerning the installation of half of Ranch Gate Road crossing at the Mopac Trail, striking out the text, "The installation of Hackberry Lane connection to Anthony Lane," continuing with the text, "and provisions for parkland dedication before the city council approves the change of zone." We're ready for the vote?
I believe we are.
On the amendment?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Okay, we have a motion to, for conditional approval of the change of zone as amended.
Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero.
I'll move that we approve preliminary plat two-one-zero-zero-one.
Uh, with the amendment?
I think, I think we have to move first.
Second.
And then I'll move to amend the motion, to amend preliminary plat two-one-zero-zero-one for east of Eighty, South Eighty-Fourth Street, south of O Street, at Spirit Park Fields, as follow. Conditions of approval, this approval permits a preliminary plat with the following waivers. A, subdivision ordinance two-six-point-two-three-point-one-zero-one-three-zero-A, to allow block lengths to exceed thirteen-hundred-twenty feet for Blocks One and Five, striking except for the connection to Hackberry Lane in Hillcrest Heights. Section B, design standards. Site-specific conditions, one, the conditioners, the subdividers shall complete the following instructions and submits the documents and plans in two copies to the Planning Department office. Note, these documents and plans are required by ordinance or design standards. One-point-one, revise the preliminary plat as follows. One-point-one-point-one, strike, show connections to Hackberry Lane to the east in Hillcrest Heights, and add note that developer is responsible for installation of street to Anthony Lane.
Did I have a second for that?
A second.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? Okay.
Okay, this is on the motion to amend. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Okay, and this would be on the main motion, conditional approval of preliminary plat two-one-zero-zero-one as amended. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Reiman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Corr?
Yes.
Motion carried, five to zero. Okay, next item, public hearing item is tax amendment two-one-zero-zero-two, amending Lincoln Municipal Code Sections twenty-seven-point-zero-two-point-zero-nine-zero and twenty-seven-point-zero-two-point-two-hundred, to make explicit the hotels and motels are a commercial use, and to define short-term rentals, amending section twenty-seven-point-zero-six-point-zero-seven-zero Household Living Group, or Use Group Table, to add short-term rentals as a conditional use to certain, in certain districts, and amending twenty-seven-point-six-two-point-zero-four-zero Household Living Use Group to add conditions required for short-term rentals, and repealing said sections as hitherto existing. Staff recommendation is approval. Are there any ex parte communications on this, to be disclosed on this item?
Yes, I attended the Mayor's Neighborhood Roundtable meetings where these were presented. I think there were two different ones.
Noted.
Any others? Okay, Rachel?
Rachel Jones, Planning Department, five-five-five South Ten Street. So before you today are the zoning changes, further proposal on short-term rentals, and these would be considered a residential land use lasting thirty days or less. There are related changes to zoning, licensing, and taxes. The tax amendment today is specific to the zoning. And we did hold a briefing with the Planning Commission on April twenty-eighth that went over a lot of the details. So we were not planning a lengthy presentation today. But we also have Abby Latrell from the Law Department, along with Sean Stewart from Building and Safety, and myself, to answer any questions that you may have.
Rachel, I have one for you. Oh, sorry. In the report, it talks about, you know, we have accessory dwelling uses or units, and it talks about if the, you know, the accessory dwelling is used, then the main dwelling cannot be if it's within six-hundred feet. What about vice versa? Can the main building, if the main building is used as a short-term rental, what about the ADU?
The vice versa would be the case as well.
And so is that just implied with how the language is in the draft? Or, I wanted, just wanna make sure that was covered.
Good, good question. I, I think it's implied. It would, it would be interpreted that way, yes.
Okay. Tom, you got a question?
I, I didn't have a question, but I did fail to, to mention, as it was so long ago, I apologize. I did attend to hear the public comment period, I think at Maxi Elementary School in February of twenty-twenty? Is that right, Rachel? Something along those lines?
Something along those lines.
And I believe there was a subsequent meeting also during this, about the same time period in the, these chambers here, also about February twenty-twenty. But honestly, it's been more than a year, so I really don't remember a whole lot, so.
Noted. Thank you, Tom.
Rachel, I had a question. Currently, this would apply to all zoning except for industrial, right? Like we're saying, it would not be allowed in industrial. Is there any consideration of the difference between areas of the city or county? What would be difference between like residential or ag zoning? Just in terms of like lot sizes, if somebody's on a small lot versus three acres or fifty acres?
Right. We do have different lot sizes, minimum sizes, that can apply in the different districts. Under these proposed regulations, it would be measured from the property line, is, is where the spacing would be measured from, the property line of where the dwelling is located.
Rachel, if, if the, this is a conditional use, so if they don't meet all conditions, can they apply for a?
can they apply for a waiver? Are they just out of luck? Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure. The conditional use is just one in which if you meet the conditions, then you're able to go and apply for your license or permit through the Building and Safety Department. There is not a waiver process for conditional use. Like we some, have some for our special permits or things like that. So in this case, no, there would not be a way to, to waive it unless perhaps you were under a PUD.
Any other questions for staff right now? Not right now? Okay. Since staff is kind of the applicant, I'm going to go to testimony and support. Testimony and support. Okay, doesn't look like we have any of those. Testimony in opposition. Testimony in opposition.
Brought a prop today.
I think Abby was afraid you were going to slap her as you walked by.
Good afternoon, members of the planning commission. My name's Peter Cat. Live in Lincoln, 6400 Artisan Way. I've signed in. I'm opposed to, to the short-term rental regulations. I don't know if we were at the same public hearing on this Maxi or South. It was a long, long time ago. And, and one of the reasons I'm here, and I followed up in the last math month with staff when this came out was I had expected there to be minutes from those meetings because a whole lot of information that was at that meeting is nowhere to be found, that I found really important. And one of the reasons I went to that public hearing and I'm here today is that I'm a fan of short-term rentals. What a great way to experience a community. I, I don't know how many of you have gone to other communities. I've stayed in Nashville and Indianapolis and Scott. We should be encouraging these things. Not finding ways to say no. And, and so the reason I brought this was because this is the city's response to the gnat of a problem that they've identified at the public hearing I was at for short-term rentals. At the hearing I was at, though people that, I don't have any Airbnbs in Lincoln. The people that were there that are due, hopefully they'll come up here and talk, but they did the research. And they said of all of the occupancy in Lincoln, I think it was less than 1% is like a 10th of a percent created any problems. Why would we regulate that? Why would we make it difficult? Now, the good news is, I think, is that unlike most times the city wants to go regulate land use behaviors, it's really kind of health and safety. It's pretty much a wild card. Anything can be health and safety. There's an advantage though now. Our state legislature agrees with my opinion that short-term rentals should be encouraged and it puts pretty good restrictions on a city's ability to exercise its zoning authority. I find no way in the record that you have, in anything I've seen, that you can fathom justifying a 600-foot restriction. Why not 100? Why not 1,000? Why not 500? There's no basis to establish that as a distance other than to limit the ability to do these things. So the justification that I think I've heard has been made, I think you can justify licensing people that want these because then that gives you the ability to control them. And obviously there are some problems with some of them that you should have the ability to control. But beyond that, I don't see anything that you should worry yourselves about. License them, that can be the condition. Shouldn't be any other restrictions beyond that. And the other nefarious thing that can happen, if I'm a neighbor and I hate short-term rentals, what do I do? I go run in and I license my home as a short-term rental. And now I have a short-term rental free zone within 600-foot radius. That's wrong. That shouldn't happen. So I, I had hoped to engage staff and have some more discussions about this, but they're hell-bent to get this through now. And so they said it's been a year and a half and it's time to move it on. So I hope you put some brakes on it. I don't think we need this. I've not heard of any really serious problems that can't be controlled by simply registering the people that want to create these. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions right now? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony in opposition. Testimony in opposition.
Hello, Josh Nix, 7611 Leighton Avenue. I am a short-term rental operator. My wife and I own three properties currently. And we are obviously for short-term rentals. Thing about short-term rentals is it's a self-regulating industry. I'm sure you guys are aware of how it works. It's peer-to-peer review. So we're incentivized to keep our properties in tip-top shape and avoid parties and any, you know, disruptive behaviors of any kind. Because we don't enjoy those ourselves and we don't want our properties to get destroyed because of it. So I think it's self-regulating. I don't think we're going to have any issues with short-term rentals becoming just all over and every corner of the, every neighborhood. I know a lot of other operators that have gotten in and out of the business because it just wasn't for them. Regardless of guest money or anything like that. So, you know, it'll, I think it'll come and go. I don't think we're having any issues with it being overly just pop saturated. As we know, Lincoln is not a vacation destination like some other areas like Vegas and Miami and stuff like that. So that's kind of my two cents on the issue.
Do you see that these regulations causing any problems for your current rentals that you have?
They may, they had a little caveat that has allowed me to continue doing what I'm doing because I actually own three in a row in an area that is not, there's no other single family in my area. And I've kind of done a little mini revitalization to this little section. It's at 8th and H, so not far from here. So they've made a little caveat that so for four weeks I could allow that. I don't really see what allowing or having the 600 feet would really do or like what it's solving. There's, I don't think there's an issue. Another host had brought up that he likes to buy on busier intersections because guests coming can easily find it and it's less disruptive to neighborhoods. By having the 600 feet, you're going to push people more into neighborhoods. If they have to go within 600 feet, it's just going to spread it wider. So I think that could be a, a con of having the spacing for sure. Because people are going to, you know, find a way around it. And if it's moving one block in, well, they'll just move one block into the neighborhood they have to. So.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Josh Nix.
I, I'm curious, how did you know that this was happening? How did you become informed of, of this so that I, I'm just, I'm, why I'm asking is I want to make sure that we get it, reach out to everybody that has one so they don't miss that four-week period.
How did I? I think Rachel had actually reached out to me. I think they had a third-party service that they hired that had contacted some hosts. And I've been trying to communicate with the short-term rental community, the, of the people that I know. And we have a Facebook group of like 30, 30 people. So I've been trying to share what's going on so they can keep aware of it all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for sharing.
Yeah.
And Josh, the only thing I want to add is that there's no such thing as a small revitalization. If you revitalize anything, we're thankful for it. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for coming up. Testimony in opposition.
Hi, I am Stacy Manson. I am also an Airbnb owner and manager, and then I'm also a Realtor. Sorry, this whole thing going.
Can you give us your address?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. 1226 South 30th Street. So with all of this going on, my concerns come from a couple of different areas. One being a Realtor and my clients' property rights. By limiting their ability to lease, you're limiting like one of the main three property rights you get when you purchase, purchase a property, which are to live in the property, to lease the property, and then eventually sell it. So by limiting these, we are elim, like eliminating or diminishing their ability to lease these properties by putting in these restrictions. So from that.
Sorry.
No worries. From that perspective, as a Realtor, I'm concerned because my clients are concerned and because you're losing your rights to do what you please on your property. I have specifically clients that are looking to purchase a property and then rent out a room so that way they can help pay for their mortgage. And as we've seen in COVID times, people are looking for additional ways to bring in income because jobs are not guaranteed, you know, work from home isn't always guaranteed. So another stream of income is very helpful. And by putting these fees in and putting this legality behind it, we're eliminating and making it more difficult for people who may just have an extra room that they would like to make a couple of dollars extra off of. And originally the proposed amended amendment was something along the lines of you have to live in the property. I don't think we have the issue of people buying properties just for Airbnbs. Like a lot, as Josh had mentioned, there are a lot of people that have gotten in and gotten out because it's a lot of work and it takes a lot of upkeep and people truly, truly care about these properties. So in terms of that, I don't foresee the issue or foresee people letting them go to waste or like not actually taken care of like you may find in a traditional rental because you're based on reviews in a lot of these platforms. And if you get a bad review, you don't have business or you don't have the opportunity to add some extra income to pay for your mortgage, you know? So I don't find that as an issue. And I think it's kind of unfair of the 600 feet because say you do need that extra money to pay for your mortgage because your husband or something lost his job and your neighbor has a dedicated rental, now you can't in your own property and you can't on a personal like separate property that you don't live in because of the 600 feet. And we, we aren't Las Vegas. We don't have a huge hotel community that is only supported by travel. A lot of my people that come and visit are just coming to visit the town or are moving between cities and they don't want to put their stuff in a parking garage or on a car just parked on the street. They have a lot of their valuables and they're staying for a night, enjoying the town. I live right by the Lincoln Zoo. They check out the different places in town. It's a very exciting way for them to experience. And I think we're limiting that ability by imposing these restrictions. Other than that, I'm just trying to think. There have been arguments of, well, there's always parties at these and we haven't had these issues. And just like any other person that owns their home, you can call the cops. That's what they're there for. There's these issues that people are bringing up that they think is constant is quite the opposite. I have had only respectful people that are very easy to communicate with. They don't want a bad review. I don't want a bad review. Our neighbors love it. They get to meet new people and they get to experience the town. So I'm not sure where all of this legislation like came in and was imposed, but I think it's doing a disservice to Lincoln, our property owners and all of the businesses around town. Sorry.
Dick?
Are you, when you talked about leasing a room, these would only apply to 30 days or less. Normally with the leasing a room, it's going to be for a semester or a year or something like that. So that would be perfectly acceptable without any problems.
I would beg to differ on that. We own an Airbnb in our basement. So we live in the top unit. And our basement unit is actually mostly just two or three days because people are traveling. So initial thoughts are yes, that you would have a long term, but actually we, we can clearly testify that that's not the case. And I think it's a more affordable way for people that maybe want to come and experience, to have that opportunity. And by eliminating that, you're forcing them to spend more money or maybe not come and then fall in love with Lincoln, which as a Realtor I've found they do and they stay. So.
Thank you.
Well, I think I've, Dick, just knowing, I think there are a variety of different travelers who have, I mean, there are clearly travelers who only want to stay in a certain branded hotel with a certain kind of bed and that, that, and eat at Applebee's. I mean, you know, like there are people very comfortable with that kind of travel. There are other people who say, I want to, I want, I need a house. I need space for my family to spread out. I'm going to be able to use the washer and dryer because we're going to be in town for a week. But a lot of, an affordable option for especially a lot of younger people to travel is to be able to just stay in a room. It's incredibly affordable and it's a great way to meet people. And for like my daughter, when she travels, she feels safer because she's been able to read the reviews and she knows she'll be in a home versus in a hotel with a big parking lot kind of thing. So I do think that there are a variety of options.
And it gives you quite the experience because you're going to meet so many new people and kind of sell Lincoln and the cool things that we've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Testimony in opposition.
Good afternoon. I'm Jan Bain and I am a big user of Airbnbs and I'm also an owner of an Airbnb in Lincoln because of that use that I had experienced. I'm also a family member with 16 siblings. So when we travel or we have weddings, an Airbnb is exactly what we're looking for because it's a place where you can stay together, catch up with family, as well as attend whatever the event is. Whenever we travel, we look for those kinds of things. And there were two parts that I guess I had opposition with, one being the 600 feet. As you know, with that many siblings and nieces and nephews, sometimes it takes more than one house. There are some that in, you know, Colorado, some huge cabins that may sleep, you know, 20 plus. But the majority is we do two houses and having them close in proximity is not a bad thing because then you can walk between the houses. And we do get to know the neighbors when we go there and that's half of the fun. I will tell you, in my Airbnb here in Lincoln, I have a binder and I ask them to look at it. And in that binder, I give a list of activities to do in Lincoln. I give them a list of restaurants and eateries to go to. And I have a book too that then I have guests leaving comments about what they liked about Lincoln that they're then sharing with the future guests that come. So to me, I think I'm selling Lincoln probably more than a hotel is selling Lincoln. And I think Lincoln's a great place to live, raise a family and visit. As you've heard previous owners saying, we're not necessarily a vacation place, but we want to make their stay the best that it can be in Lincoln. Also, you know, pets are another thing that a lot of hotels don't allow. And a lot of times if you have a house, there's a better opportunity, especially when folks are traveling across the country and they have a pet with them. They're moving from one side of the country to the other. They're looking for that where they can stay together as a family, get a good night's rest and have their four-legged friends, family members stay with them as well. And the second thing that if I remember right what I read, it talked about only two people being able to stay in a room. A designated room. A hotel room that has two beds automatically is four and then you can get a rollaway and that's five. So why are we limiting an Airbnb to say, because I can tell you in mine, I have a basement that the room is like half the basement and I do have two queen size beds in one room. It allows for two families to come together and that room to be maybe where a family stays together and the other one has the, the up floor. So to me, I'm not for sure where that two people have to, you know, is all that can occupy one room. That doesn't really make sense. It kind of sounds to me like we're just kind of creating arbitrary type of limitations versus, you know, if I'm just doing a long-term rental, I'm not telling a family they can't put more than two people in that one room. So why would we limit a short-term rental with that? So open to your questions.
I don't think we have any. Thanks for sharing.
All right, thank you.
And could you state your address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My home address is 7300 Martel Road, Hickman, Nebraska.
Very good. Thank you.
Testimony in opposition. We do have two on Zoom. Channel five, I think we're ready for one of those.
Okay, Chris is up, followed by Jason. Hi, Chris Vasek, 8210 Dundee Drive in Lincoln. I am speaking in opposition of this tax amendment today for a lot of the same reasons that were stated. So I won't, I won't repeat any, any of them. But I, I do want to stress that I am a, my wife and I and my, and my family are, are Airbnb lovers when we travel. You know, while it is also a way that economically it was feasible for us when we were, when we were younger in college or whatnot. It also has been a way for us to experience different cities in different. Um, it also has been a way for us to experience different cities in different ways. So many, many people, um, talked about their positive experiences and, and one of the uh, things that I thought that I wanted, that was worth repeating was, um, the 600-foot radius. Um, a lot of times, you know, having large families or we like to travel with other couples. Uh, and, and so, you know, one thing, even though Lincoln is not a touristic type city, we have a lot of things going for us and we're continuing to do. Um, you know, whether that's Husker football Saturdays or basketball games, arena events. Um, historically, we have had the stigma, uh, fair or unfair, that we have not been a very progressive city. We've been scared of growth. I think we've done a lot in the last few decades to change that, um, with the, you know, uh, expansion of our downtown, with the expansion of our arts, um, the zoo, um, you know, a lot of the arena additions, um, just a lot of the things that, that this planning commission, city council and our mayors, as well as our citizens have gotten behind. Um, a lot of my friends, even 15, 20 years ago, uh, were graduating college at one of our universities and because of this train of thought, um, we're not able to find good jobs here. You know, would want to go spirit, experience other communities and it's been really fun for them to come back, maybe, uh, to raise their family and say, wow, this community has come a long way. And I just see this in general, um, that this text amendment as another way of us not being progressive and, and, and over governance, um, that's just not, not needed. Um, yeah, I didn't bring my fly swatter like Peter did, but I appreciated a lot of things that, that he said and the fact that this is an industry that clearly you've heard from a few people that are in it that self-regulates. Um, I also want to bring up, uh, a point that hasn't been raised about how there are condo associations, there are residential associations, there are communities and developments that can, uh, govern it themselves if it becomes a problem. As a homeowner, um, I would not have a, a problem, you know, if one came into my neighborhood, uh, because I've experienced it. However, I also wouldn't want the ability to not do that if, uh, I came on hard times or, um, if I wanted to, uh, in my retirement, uh, like, um, my parents are, you know, maybe buy a condo downtown, but I'm only going to be there for part of the season and, and I'm, or part of the year and I'm not able to then rent my house or get some more income. Homeownership has become harder and harder and more expensive as we are learning in this very competitive, uh, real estate environment. And I have mentioned earlier that I am in commercial real estate. Um, so I, I, but I don't know, I know from speaking with some of the residential Realtors how, how hard it is to buy a home here. Um, and that just approves that how many people want to come to our city? How many people are falling in love with our city? Um, but why make that harder for them as construction costs continue to in- increase? As lot prices continue to go higher? Um, you have, also have some folks that, that don't want to own a home, you know, full-time. Um, they might work half the time in Austin, half the time in, in San Francisco, part of the time here, uh, part of the time remotely. Uh, COVID has taught us that, um, there's a lot of ways to, to make a living. And why should we over-govern something that is really a positive, that so many people have positive experiences for? So, um, we have a lot of place, a lot of ways to, uh, I think, get past some of these things, but it just really felt like, um, from the 600-foot radius to the 12-person max, uh, to, to, uh, the, the zoning all the way from my suburban home to a downtown condo, uh, to just blanket, like, over-govern it just, just seemed, uh, shortsighted. So, um, that I think concludes my time. If there's any questions.
Next we'll take Jason.
Jason, you're up if you want to unmute yourself.
All right. My name is Jason Skold. I live at 2627 Washington. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you. So, uh, my wife and I own, uh, some rental apartments and a house we're working on, uh, to, to rent hopefully in the near future. And I just am opposed to this short-term rental regulations, uh, from various aspects you've, you've heard other speakers speak to, I think. But I think this impacts most probably the people like me that, that, uh, don't have short-term rentals but are considering it and want to be able to have that option, uh, in, in the future. Uh, I think the point that was raised that somebody that's just opposed to this outright can apply for a license and then, uh, be exclusionary, uh, to that potential for people in, in the, in the future. And I just really think you're limiting renters, you're limiting owners, uh, and you're limiting Lincoln by doing this for no real reasons. And I attended the public meeting back in 2020. Uh, I read the summary of the comments from both of those meetings. Uh, I read the staff report that accompanied this meeting and very troubling that, that there is, seems to be really no justification for taking these steps related to short-term rentals. So, um, the staff report speaks to potential impacts that could happen. Um, I, I just don't see the sense of making regulations on potential. I think related to paragraph 12 in the staff report, what you do is yes, license, uh, short-term rentals, get a sense of the inventory, get the sense of where they are, uh, over the years, get the sense of impacts, good or negative. And then somewhere down the line, if for whatever reason need be, um, some form of regulation. But to do this right off the bat with no justifications that I can find, just impacts my property rights and I think limits the economic opportunities in, in Lincoln, uh, as you heard. So, um, again, I'm opposed to this. Hopefully the board can ask some questions, get some more justifications from staff and others on why this is happening because I'd love to hear that. But, uh, other than that, um, conclude my comments. Appreciate the opportunity and we'll take any questions. Thank you.
Do I have any further testimony in opposition here in the hearing room? Okay. Um, staff questions. Go ahead, Dick.
Rachel, when, um, you presented earlier to us, um, to just brief us on this issue, you had mentioned the 600-foot as something that you, that staff felt was an appropriate distance apart. Um, can you tell me again what the, the reasoning for that was?
Right. So we, um, I, I think maybe I should start out and say we absolutely want to allow this use to occur and we appreciate those operators that, you know, maintain their property and, uh, limit parties and things like that. Um, the origin and reasoning behind the 600 feet, we started out, as you may know, with requiring that, uh, the dwelling be the primary residence of the person who was the host. And that was eliminated, um, based on partly considering feedback that we did receive from operators, that it was too limiting in this 600 feet is really a compromise in terms of a, a different way that it could be, uh, regulated. We looked at other communities nationwide. Spacing is one way that they regulate those, the 600 feet is in keeping with those other communities that we had found. And so it was a way to provide minimum regulations that were serving the interests of the community as a whole. Certainly, operators are one major stakeholder group, but we also heard from neighbors who live next to them and we're looking for, um, a bit more, uh, regulations there. I want to mention that the spacing would not apply in commercial districts. So downtown would not have spacing applied to it. Areas of the Haymarket and commercial zoning would also not have spacing. They would only be required to get the license. And so I would just conclude that it was, it was our job to find a compromise between these different interests. The 600 feet is a way to limit the impacts of short-term rentals on any one area, on any one street or property while still allowing them to occur and, and not disrupting too much the, the fabric of the long-term residential uses.
Well, like the gentleman that has three right together, uh, three properties right together, um, that has not seemed to impact his neighborhood, um, in a negative way, uh, by them being grouped. And, and I also understand, um, uh, when they have family get-together or whatever, that they want those units to be closer together so that they can move back and forth between the two, two rentals. Um, and I, I have not heard of problems with the short-term rentals. I do think registration is, is, um, a good idea because it gives us an, 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 a knowledge then of where the properties are. But I, I wonder if we shouldn't start with just that as a requirement and then only go to these other, uh, requirements if they're absolutely needed.
And I would note as well that we are proposing that four-week period at the beginning of the licensing where if you're a current operator and you have properties that are next to each other or otherwise not 600 feet away from other short-term rentals, that you can get licensed during that time.
So if somebody's in the process of purchasing a building right now, maybe they aren't going to get to closing in time to be able to register. One of the things I was wondering about was earlier you talked about that there wouldn't be, because it's conditional, there's no waiver process. So if somebody has a duplex, currently they're living in the downstairs and they want the upstairs to be, but then they move out of town, but they want to keep it, they could still only use one level as a short-term rental and not the other level, but there would be no way for them to ever go back and reapply? Is that, because there isn't a waiver process or no way to go around it?
Right. A- after the four weeks period or whatever that's determined to be, that's correct. A duplex would, would not be able to have both units licensed.
Any other questions for Rachel? Okay.
If I could maybe mention one other thing, on the, on the two persons per, per sleeping area, that would be an average total, uh, cap for the dwelling unit as a whole. And areas like a den or a living area could be considered a sleeping area if they met egress and other standards. So you could have m- more than two people in a bedroom as long as you were meeting the overall cap based on the number of sleeping areas.
Which is 12, right?
Which is two persons per sleeping area up to a maximum of 12.
But the sleeping area doesn't have a square footage.
No. It does not have the square footage.
So like if you have a large basement and it's just a big basement, that's still only two, even if it's...
The entirety of the basement.
The entirety of the basement. I was trying to like put some numbers together.
Well, I may have, I may see if Sean can pop up and help clarify that point.
Okay.
Sean Stewart, Chief Housing Inspector with Building and Safety, um, 555 South 10th.
Thank you.
The thought on the, on the, the square footage require, well, it, basically the two persons per sleeping area was that it's kind of the, it's more of a standard that in general, uh, a bedroom can, can have enough square footage for two persons. The code requirement is basically 70 for the first person and 50 square foot for each additional person. So a two-bedroom apartment could sustain quite a few people as far as square footage goes. However, if you're talking a two-bedroom apartment and you have a living room and a dining room, the living room and the dining, and partial area of the dining room can, in, according to the code, can attribute for a sleeping area. So basically you would have, for your cap, you would have two, four, possibly six or eight-person capacity there. Now, I don't, I don't think as far as the code goes, we wouldn't assume that we wouldn't go and check to see, you know, do you have four people in the basement and nobody in the living room? You know? It's kind of just a general guideline, I guess.
And correct me if I'm wrong here, but this is still going to be a complaint-based system, correct?
Correct.
So for example, Building and Safety won't be scouring Airbnb.com and lot, and trying to see what if someone's advertising as a designated number of sleepers or, or anything like that, but, but rather a system of, let's say there is a problem with a particular house in a particular neighborhood, then you would, and you've received complaints regarding said, said property that, then you might go and investigate.
Correct. Yeah. It's, um, our, I guess our idea is more of a honor system as far as a, in the licensing application side of things, is that they will basically sign an affidavit providing information that, that they won't put people in areas without two means of egress, that they have smoke detection, carbon monoxide detection, things like that. Um, so yeah, we won't be going to every property and checking them out. It is a, a fairly peer-based, um, industry, I think.
Other questions for staff?
No. I'll move that we close public hearing.
Second, Edgerton. Jerry?
Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Brian Menyost?
Yes.
Becky Yes?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
I would, um, move to amend, uh, text amendment 21002 to remove all criteria except for registration at this time.
I will second that amendment. I mean, we have to, we haven't introduced, we haven't moved to approve. I have to move the main motion first and then amend.
Okay.
But then I would second your amendment.
Okay. Well, I would move text amendment 21002 then for approval and then would ask, well, if there's a second.
I'll move your motion to, to approve text amendment 21002.
You'll second that?
I'll second that.
Then I would offer the amendment that we remove all criteria at this point except the registration.
Which Cindy seconded.
I seconded that. So now we can discuss.
Reason I, I think, I think we may be jumping ahead of ourselves on, on this. I am not an Airbnb person, but I, I do have friends that are and I, I, the, a number of people that, that do like to do this and get to know a community better, um, I don't think some of the things that are part of this text amendment are really, um, necessary at this starting point. I think if we see that there be, is a problem that's developing in some area, then I think we bring that forward and, and amend that. Um, but I'd rather start out slowly and, um, get a sense of where the, uh, these short-term rentals are located within the community and, um, and, and then be able to, to watch the activity and such before we start putting a lot of different regulations in place. I mean, I, for example, 300 feet is normally a city block. Well, maybe it should only be 300 feet apart or maybe it should be no, no distance apart. Um, I don't know the answer to that yet, but I'm willing to start out with a basic registration and we'll get a better picture of, of how, um, where they lay and, and how close some, some of them are together right now.
Just clarifying that when you, your motion to remove everything except for the registration, you mean the license, right? Like they would still have a license from Building and Safety.
Correct.
But the, the 600 feet, the 12-person, the two-person dwelling unit.
Right. All of that stuff, everything other than the registration and the license.
I, I share some of the concerns about the hearing from people who are testifying today about the 600 feet and also about the way in which, it, it already sounds like with the two-person, that it might be a little nebulous about what that's going to be. And so if we're already thinking maybe there's vagaries around it and we're going to be kind of going around the edges, then maybe we shouldn't have it in there unless we have very clear-cut guidelines around it.
I can't, I can't tell how this is going to go, but it looks like it might be split a little bit. You know, I think that there is some value in adding some level of oversight because we're talking about strictly residential areas. I would certainly be open to adjusting the 600-foot limit. I would certainly be open to including owner-occupied exemptions beyond just an accessory dwelling unit. I would certainly be open to grouping scenarios that allow, allow multiple locations or users group together. You know, I, but I, but I also do feel like there, you know, people that are in the residential zoning districts, I think, do have and should reasonably have an idea that those, that their neighbors will be longer-term users. And so I don't know what that balance is. I, I do think that from where we started 14, 16 months ago to where we are today is a huge leap in the, in the right direction as evidenced by the turnout that we have here today. You know, we, we started with dozens and dozens of people attending public hearings and, and now down to, to a few. I, I think we're definitely moving in the right direction. I'd certainly be open to, to changing items. I'm not 100% sure that I'm willing to go down to just simply registration at this point.
If I can respond, Tom, not every neighborhood has an association, an HLA.
Right.
But a vast majority of them do. And the homeowners association can make those restrictions or determinations for their, for their area if they, if the neighborhood so, so desires. So I, I don't think that it's necessary for us to have a citywide until we were.
Dick, 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 you're digging yourself in deeper here.
Huh? I didn't hear you.
You're digging yourself in deeper. So I have a huge problem with this, huge. So number one, not all neighborhoods have homeowner associations. So then you're talking about the core neighborhoods. We can't, we have no, we don't have homeowners associations, so we can't regulate that like the, the outskirts. So then you're going to be picking on them and you're going to have concentrations, which is why we have the 600-foot rule. I have a huge problem just from the get-go because we've spent 14 months, staff spending a lot of time working on this. And like Tom said, we had huge droves of people in here. Maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but you know, if, if you, this is, this represents a compromise and a lot of work by staff, a lot of people, you know, voicing their opinions. The reason why we don't have a lot of those people here today is because they're okay with this. But if you go and do that, then people are not going to be okay with this. I understand that there might be questions about how did we come up with two per, per, you know, per space or the 600 feet. I, I liken this situation a lot to, to the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units. We did a lot of studying on that. We had to come to a compromise. Today, we've only heard one perspective. We have not heard the other perspective. And I understand that this is a peer rating and that, you know, that it goes both ways. I completely understand that. I've, I, I've used Airbnbs and those kinds of things. I think they're a great thing. But on the opposite perspective of that, we also have some concerns that we might be going a very, down a very dangerous road of, we may not have a lot of tourist attractions, but we do have Husker football. And I can see a lot of these, you know, being rented up during that and those people, you know, people can get a little crazy during those situations. A lot of drinking, a lot of partying. And I, I would say that like we did with the ADUs, that we need to start with more regulations that we can always lessen as we go along. We do know where those rentals are right now. We have that third-party vendor, vendor that we've, you know, we know that we have about 180 to 200 in the city right now. I, I think this is a good start. I think that we can always come back and take some of those off later, you know, if in a year or two that we see that, you know, maybe we don't need the 600-foot spacing. Maybe we don't need the two-person, you know, per, you know, sleeping area. But I'd rather start with these now and then modify it later. So one of the things that I, when we had the briefing, I had not considered, because a lot of people, like the people who are speaking today are people who are, this is a significant revenue stream. But there are times where Lincoln does have need for additional spaces like state basketball tournament or something like that, Husker football Saturdays. If, if we have the 600 foot, does then that mean that we would have people who will then be posting on these sites without meeting these things? Because there's no way they can get in, but they're just going to go ahead and do it. I mean. They might? Yeah. That's. And we've seen instances of that before in different rules, you know, with event venues and stuff. We can't control all of that. But if it is a problem, then we have recourse. And I guess neighborhoods are very hesitant because we have, and it's usually just the small 1% that creates a problem, but then it ruins it for everybody else. And we, we don't have recourse on a lot of those situations. And so this is setting it up, it's protecting it. We don't know how this is going to play out necessarily. After we get it going a little bit more, then maybe we can feel more comfortable with it.
We, we might be headed towards having this delayed due to lack of a five, a five vote. Do we want to go down that road and see how we vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have the motion to amend currently.
Okay. Okay. So I have a motion to amend text amendment 21002 to remove all criteria except for the registration licensing requirement.
From Campbell, you had that and then Ryman Yost seconded that.
That is correct.
Yep.
Ready to call it? Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
No.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
No.
Core?
No.
Motion failed due to lack of majority vote.
The main motion?
Do we want to vote on the main motion? Are we ready? Do we need more discussion?
I'm ready to vote.
I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
This is the mode on, or vote on the main motion. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero.
As previously mentioned, the public hearing on agenda item 4.3, change of zone 040751, Village Gardens Development, is delayed to the May 26, 2021 Planning Commission hearing as Commissioner Campbell has declared a conflict of interest on this matter and will need to recuse himself from this portion of the hearing resulting in a lack of quorum. David Carey, do you want to come up now?
David Carey, Director of Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. Before we're done today, I do want to acknowledge Commissioner Beckius's tenure here with us with the Planning Commission. Congratulations goes out to him as being, for being elected to the City Council. We're looking forward to working with you at that level. So I just want to give some acknowledgement of that. The turnaround time wasn't such that we were able to do all the other things, but those are in the works, so you'll get.
Great, that makes my life easier.
That's right. So thank you very much. We appreciate it and we will look forward to working with you continually.
Thank you very much. I just want to take a quick second to say thank you to my colleagues that I've worked with over the years. Our work continues together as we are all part of city leadership and I look forward to talking with you after you vote in the future. So I look forward to sticking around and then working with these great people even more. So, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Snag it.
Jerry, call it, quick.
Okay. Campbell?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Ryman Yost?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Core?
Yes.
Motion carried five.
She's been has her running shoes on.
I'm going to put Ryman Yost as second. Is that right?
It was me, Core.
She seconded, I said yes, when you.
Okay. So I'm going to use Ryman Yost.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.